Good afternoon. The Tuesday, December 8th, 2015 briefing meeting has now come to order. The agenda is forward, we will start with Executive Services with Dr. Atkins. We're Policy 9.11, the naming rights for schools for district facilities. We have Mr. Mora.
Good afternoon, Board members. As Mr. Mora takes, prepares to take the stage, I'd like to just mention that this is a culmination of, you know, bringing this policy forward. We're looking forward to being able to use this, not only to name schools for the purposes of recognizing individuals that have contributed greatly to the school district, but also as a means of providing us some revenue. So that having been said, Mr. Mora.
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Good afternoon, Board members. I know you've seen this document a few times now, and I do apologize that we had to bring it back one more time for briefing. The Board recommended that we change a particular piece of it in regards to revenue sharing, and we've done that edit, and it should be in your Board briefing materials. It's on page eight, lines 187 and 188. We've edited that line to read, "The distribution of all net compensation received by the district pursuant to this policy shall be negotiated on a case-by-case basis." And you will notice from the strike through, we had recommended a 50-50 split with the school and the district. So we've gave some flexibility there for that to be negotiated based on circumstance. In the case, it might be new construction, or it might be the case of funding a track, which would be, we want all of the funds to go towards the construction of a track, per se. So that is the only edit that is, was made, and the change from the last time we briefed it, and I'll open up to any questions.
Board members, Ms. Morgan.
I hate to do this, Mark, and I hope the Board will indulge the Finance Advisory Committee, but they would like, they have taken this particular policy on as one of three projects that they intend to complete by the middle of January. They have some concerns about the policy. They would like to have the opportunity to review it before it's brought back for a final, final vote. So they would expect to come with recommendations in January.
I will share, Ms. Morgan, that Mr. Scott, I believe he's the Chair of that particular committee, actually had input on this particular policy and its development, but I do understand that other members would like to also look at it as well.
Other Board members weighing in on Ms. Morgan's request? Well, I would just like to say, you know, the, the change that you did, Mark, on the distribution, one of the things that's not clear on the, when it says, "Distribution of all net compensation received by the district shall be negotiated on a case-by-case basis," but it doesn't say by whom. And so, and that's the issue, and it doesn't say that once that negotiation's been negotiated, that it's come back to the Board for approval of that negotiated rate. In other words, it's, it's worth, your, your, the Board's giving it away, and the district, you know, administrators are going to be doing that, that type of negotiations without coming back to us for approval. And I mean, I know it's inferred, and Mr. Martin's probably just getting ready to correct me, saying it would come back to the Board, but I, should, Mr. Martin, I'll let you-
Well, I, I think the intention, and Mr. Mora can explain this more fully, would be to address that issue in the agreement with, with the donor, so that, and the, and the individual agreements would come to the school board for approval.
But does it, but is there, is there language in here that, that kind of specifies that that's a requirement? I mean, we're, we're assuming that it would be in the agreement, but if it's not, then, then the Board wouldn't get a chance to approve it or deny it?
There, there's nothing more than the language that Mr. Mora described to you. If Board feels like you need something more specific to state that, but I understood that to be the intention.
Just a thought. Ms. LaRiviere.
We go by policy. So if it is said in our policy that the lease agreements will be written such that it will go to the Board for final approval, I believe that component needs to be there because otherwise it could be assumed that it might not have to be. And so, we all know the definition of assume, and we just want to make sure that it's very clear. So that would be, I, I concur with that aspect. And with regard to the Finance Committee wanting to weigh in, I don't see that we have any pressure to get this done today. And I believe that the more that we have community involvement on our policies, the better it is. So I am perfectly fine with waiting for a time for the Finance Committee to have some time to weigh in, and I would hope that Mr. Mora would, are you on the facility, are you on Finance at all?
No, ma'am.
I know, you're on-
Operations.
You're on this committee, and you're, you're on several committees, I know, but it would be beho-
It's Bill Bott, yeah.
It would behoove the, it would behoove the Committee, it would be great for him to be invited to that, so there could be good discussion.
Board members, do we, do we have, is there anybody that objects, any of the five Board members that object? Do we have consensus to Ms. Morgan's request, that we would request Dr. Atkins to pull this at this time, to allow the Committee to come back with recommendations and then bring forward, and then, and then also gives them the opportunity of, of looking at the, at the language here to see whether or not, and actually, that would be a question that I would like to, Ms. Morgan, to pose to the Finance Committee. Let them see whether or not the language suffices whether the agreement, and have them work with Mr. Mora and Mr. Martin as well, so that that question, we don't have to belabor that point, however they-
Sounds good.
You know, would come back with that recommendation, we can use that, working with Mr. Mora and, and Dr. Atkins, that be all right?
Okay.
Anybody? Okay? Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Board, and we'll be happy to do that. I think that I do agree, if we have an Advisory Committee that's supporting us on this, it's probably a really good thing, so. All right, then that takes us to the next item.
Next one, we have Business and Finance with Dr. Desmore on the Budget Process and Priorities. Dr. Atkins.
And as Dr. Desmore makes her way to the, to the dais, I just want to say that we are looking at the budget process very differently this year. We're letting the District Strategic Plan really drive our, our budgeting process, so we're starting first by setting our priorities as a executive team, and then going off of those priorities and setting the budget based on those absolute priorities. So Dr. Desmore is here to brief us on how that new process is going to unfold.
Nope. The mic still isn't on.
How about now? Can you hear me now? Okay. Good afternoon. All right, so we're here, as Dr. Atkins said, to talk about the budget priorities and the process for this year. The first thing that I wanted to share with you, because we're on a little bit of an earlier timeline this year, because the Legislature will be picking up earlier, I think the date is January 12th, their convening session. So because of that, in addition to the multitude of other things that I'm sure we had to be thankful for around this time this year, we also have the Governor's Budget that we could also be thankful for. And so, you have that in front of you so that you could see what the Governor had proposed for this year. The, the news media has reported on this a little already, but I just wanted to kind of highlight a few things to make sure we had the same conversation surrounding these numbers, and then talk about what we're looking at for the rest of the year, as far as the budget process is concerned, priorities, and then get your input on, on what this might look like. First of all, when you look at the Governor's Budget, you see that our FTE that, that the Governor projected for us for next year was around $91,866, which is an increase of about a little over 1,700 FTE. So we feel it's a little on the light side, but of course, when the Governor releases their budget from the office, they don't have a lot of the information that we now have, you know, related to FTE. And so, we're in the process of doing our FTE forecasting now for next year, which will be the real number that the Legislature will use when they create their budgets for next year. And those numbers look closer to around 1,800, 1,850, which is a little over a 2% growth for us. And that will look a lot like it looked this year, because we were at about a 2% growth rate this year. Remember, our FTE projection was $90,137, and we just about hit that right on the nose. So we're, we're in good shape as far as that's concerned, and we expect our growth to continue within the district. So they're, they're, they're still coming in each and every day. So when you come down to the bottom line of what the Governor's Budget is talking about, we're looking at a total increase for our district of a little over $22 million, which is about a 3.4% increase in total funding. But when you look at the funding for weighted FTE, you know, it's about little, little less than 1.5% when you look at the funding per FTE. So 3.4% in total increase in funding, less than 1.5% when you look at that increase per FTE, because we're going to have more FTE next year than we have this. So much had been made in the media, when you, if you listen to the coverage that was around the Governor's Budget, in terms of where that increase was coming from. The Legislature seemed to have some issue with the fact that they felt like, you know, this increase is largely coming from property taxes, and it's not coming from money that the state is putting behind this budget, and had a little bit of beef with that, and, and talked about that within the media. So when you look at the breakdown of the numbers at the very bottom of the page, you see that our funding is, right now, it's coming about 60%, 66% local, 34% state. And in the Governor's Budget next year, that, I mean, it doesn't, it, it changes a little bit, so, you know, it's 67% state, 33%, I'm sorry, 67% local, 33% state. So for us, that is largely how it's been anyway, and we've had many conversations about that in terms of the fact that most of the funding inside of the FAFP for us is coming from local property taxes. And in fact, that percentage has been much higher in previous years. It's been upwards of 75 to 80% in previous years. So the story that they were talking about really wasn't much of a story to us, because that's kind of how it's been, but they, they're talking about it. So I don't know what will happen with that, how that will change, but this is just a picture of the Governor's Budget. And then, last to say about that is the fact that the Governor's Budget is just that, the Governor's Budget. The Legislature has to do their work in terms of really laying out what they're talking about for the year, and that's going to really tell the story of what we will receive. So how the, the first runs that come out of the Legislature will compare with this Governor's Budget, we don't really know, so we have to wait and see. But in previous years, the Governor's Budget has always been the high watermark. What we receive from the Legislature ends up being something usually less than what we see on the Governor's Budget. But this year being an election year, we'll see, you know, kind of how that works out. The next sheet that you have within your packet is just an analysis, so you see, because also, a lot of conversation has happened around what this funding looks like compared to previous years. We've talked a lot about the funding never, still has not come back to the 2008 levels, which was our high mark. And so, you see a comparison between where we've been in 2006, 2007, all the way through to this proposed Governor's Budget. So with the proposed Governor's Budget, the amount that we would be receiving per FTE, $7,388 per FTE, does, does not quite for us surpass where we were in 2008. So I'm sure that it does for some counties, because when they release the budget, they look at it as a whole, like as a statewide on a whole, of what it's doing on the average. And on the average, the numbers that they showed, showed that the, the funding was above the 2008 levels, but when you look at specifically for our county what it looks like, not yet. So just a delineation that I wanted to show for you all. Do you all have any questions about that, before we kind of move on to the process in general? Okay, all right. So as far as the budget process is concerned, as Dr. Atkins talked about, we have a very detailed strategic plan. And within that strategic plan, Dr. Atkins has given each of the, each of his divisions the charge in terms of specific projects and specific areas that he wants us to focus on in the upcoming years. So each of the departments and divisions have taken that information, taken the charge, and started to think about those and devise different projects and different methods of, of producing the results around those focus areas. And so, really, those focus areas will be what we're building the budget on for the 2016, 2017 year. Each division and department has already received that focus area list. Everybody's kind of doing their thought process around that now, and we've set up, as you know, the, the budget process kind of goes in two different pieces. We've got the school piece and the department piece. So as far as departments are concerned, we've already sent out information to departments in terms of making sure that they are thinking now about what these focus areas will mean to them in terms of their budgets and what they want to accomplish next year. And we plan on meeting with all of our departments on January 20th, in order to give them the forms that they need to fill out for the process for next year, give them the ground rules, and give everybody the information that they need to complete those. And then we'll give each department about three weeks to do that. In addition, and at the same time, we're also working with our school development people, planning and school capacity, ESE, and other people within the district around the school allocation as well. So beginning the building blocks of that process in terms of making sure that we have a complete understanding of where all of our specific school programs and, you know, in all areas will be for next year, looking at what worked within our school allocation this year, and thinking about all the things that we might need to adjust some for next year, thinking about what new things might be taken on for next year. And we're beginning to formulate a, a DRA allocation or a formula for next year's, you know, for next year's allocation for schools. So all those things come together at the same time. As I said, January is when departments will meet, and at the same time, we'll begin to pull all of that information together for schools. And the bottom line, or the goal for that, would be in the late March or early April, I'm sorry, mid, mid to late April timeframe, to be able to release those school allocations so that schools have the ability to plan in advance for the next year, and then also to be able to be finalized in terms of getting those department requests back, being able to review those with each of the assistant superintendents and ultimately Cabinet, and be able to come back to the Board with a comprehensive look of what the budget requests will, and what the complete budget for FY '17 will look like in the May and June timeframe. So that's kind of the overall process that we're looking at, and based on what is in the strategic plan and what the superintendent has discussed with us, we feel confident that next year's budget will be, will be reflecting the priorities that, ultimately, that the Board has laid out in the, in the, in the document of the strategic plan. So are there any questions?
Ms. Morgan?
Just comments. First of all, Dr. Atkins, I want to compliment you on the process. And I would like to add that, I went to QIAAC this morning for a little while, and it was very apparent in the conversation there that you have made it clear that the budget priorities are driven by the focus areas. So everybody is aware of that, it's a new, it's a new way of doing things, and they're talking about the work involved, but I wanted to mention that. Wanted to say that we heard a lot at FSBA about the spinmeisters at the state level talking about historical funding levels, and that that should be put in context of, yes, the numbers are higher than they've ever been, but they still don't account for the growth in student enrollment-
Right, absolutely.
And the impact on the, the impact is, in fact, on the, the local-
Yes, ma'am.
The local government. And then the last thing I would like to say, I happen to be visiting a school this morning, and there was a compliment passed on to you. The principal mentioned that while they were dealing with the staffing crunch, that you were a great coach, helping them get through the process of figuring out where in their budget, how in their budget, they could make up for the situation they were in. So clearly, there's a lot been going on in the background with respect to the staffing situation, but kudos to you. She made it very clear that you were a great handholder and coach.
Oh, that's great to hear. Thank you.
Ms. LaRiviere?
And I just go back to when I went to her training for Finance, we should hug our Chief Financial Officer every day, what you do and the way you go about it so methodically and patiently, and working with our schools and district staff is, is to be commended, and we really do have a wise woman in you. So thank you.
Thank you.
One of the things that I, and I'd mentioned this a little bit during the last budget cycle, but I, I want to put a little bit of emphasis on it and a little bit of, of analysis. We currently allocate in our schools by DRA, and that's basically taking our salaries and taking a, a average, and you put a DRA. So you put people, you know, there are just, there are slots in a, in a school. And the problem that you have with that is that the DRAs are not equal DRAs. If you've got a 30-year teacher is worth X amount of dollars, and a one-year, first year teacher is X amount of dollars, and, and you look at, and I analogize it to, almost like the pro basketball teams, you know, you get a whole lot of franchise players on one, on one roster, and you have a whole lot less on the other roster. And if you were to take the salary, you know, look at a salary cap type of, type of scenario, in other words, you take all the salaries in a particular school, based upon the teaching DRAs for the elementary and for the middle schools, and kind of see where they fall. And I, and I'm going to be asking for that sometime through the process, so, and I, Board members, I don't know if that's something you'd be interested in, but to me, I think it's, you know, if you, if you have a disparate amount of, of first-year teachers in a school, for whatever reason it may be, you know, you're not going to get the, you're spending a cent, you're getting a whole lot less dollar, impact dollars on that school, and, and you don't have the resources, that first person, you know, if, if you had extra money, because you're, you're, you're taking in five new teachers, you'd have an extra resource, some more extra dollars that you could actually spend for someone to, to coach and, and bring those people up. So I mean, there's, I think there's ways that, that we could actually make it a more equitable DRA allocation than to have some of the schools get, you know, a lot of franchise players. They don't need extra, you know, training wheels on any of these classrooms, because they're all veterans, and then you have other schools, and I, and I think we might see that impact in performance. So it's just, I don't know, it's just a question that I, that I've, I've posed. Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, I would agree. I think it is an interesting question. I'm not sure if it's something we need, we should be taking up in the current budget cycle, though, because-
Maybe just to review.
But I'm thinking that would be a great ask of the Finance Advisory. I would, they are very engaged in sort of a project approach to their work this year, and when they finish their January projects, they will be lining up another group of projects. So I'd like to take it to them and-
Absolutely.
-see what they have to say.
Dr. Atkins?
Just a, a couple comments, so that we can certainly take a look at that. One of the things we are, that, one of the reasons we have the DRA allocation the way it's formulated is, is that we do want to protect our, our hiring managers a little bit from, you know, like age discrimination suits and so forth, so the, the 30-year PhDs will cost me the same as a first, first-year teacher. That, now, to get to your point, one of the things that we're trying to do to, I think, level that playing field, so one team doesn't end up with all the franchise players, is, is through our career ladder. And I think you're going to see, that's again, the part of this budget process, why things have to come, go reverse, and what they've gone in the past, is that our priorities are, what are we going to do about DA schools, for example? And, and maybe the, the formula for a DA school may look different from a school in another location where the needs are not as great. And maybe the way we pay people who work in a DA school look different than what we pay people in other places. And that's a part of this allocation process that I think you'll see, us be able to take some of our more challenging situations and put more resources toward them.
So the same concern that we voice, just a different way to skin the cat. Okay, good enough, thank you. Thank you, Doctors Morris. Okay, moving on now to operations. Dr. Atkins, you have job descriptions with Dr. Pruitt, Jean Christensen, and Ms. Lila Mudvee, along with Mrs. LaFountain.
Again, as, as they're taking the stage, these are job descriptions that we have been working on for quite some time. This has also been a collaborative effort. We've worked with our associations and Labor Management on these job descriptions, and I, I will have to tell you, Jeannie brings quite a challenge to the table when it comes to working through these job descriptions, but we are, we are here, and I think this is really good work that goes in really aligning our duties and functions with the actual job descriptions themselves.
Good afternoon, Board members. Dr. Atkins, Mr. Martin. Dr. Atkins, you just went through my script that I was going to discuss this afternoon. That's okay, that's great. Less pressure on me. What you will have, you should have received prior to the briefing are the job descriptions. You may be wondering why they're not in the new format, and that is because we are going live with the new template in January of this year. So all of the job descriptions that you have in front of you, that you received prior to the meeting are, have been either new or revised in order to better align and accurately reflect the duties of the position. There are no fiscal impact associated with any of these, it's just in order to bring them up to date and to align them with what the current employees are doing. And I'm going to open it up to questions that you may have, which is why Mrs. LaFountain and- and Mrs. Mudvi are here this afternoon.
Board members?
I just want you to know, I have no questions, and having known Dr. LaFountain for quite a while, I do know that she is quite meticulous about her tasks, and I do appreciate all of you collaborating to bring something forward that's very clear.
I have to agree. I think that the succinctness of the description, it was very well articulated, and it really leaves a lot, it really takes us to a different level where people can actually see exactly what their requirements are as far as education level and what their job expectations are going to be, and I think it's done a very good job. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
We'll now go to Ms. Ralph and our teaching and learning with our school improvement plans.
Okay, and at this time, we will go ahead and get started with our school improvement plans. Again, this is a continuation of our presentations that we started actually at our last briefing. Our first presentation comes to us from Mirror Lakes Elementary, Mr. Courtney. And while he's getting ready, I do have to compliment the board in that you had the courage to support us on the administrative salary schedule and the turnaround principle and the senior turnaround principle. And here we are, looking at a senior turnaround principle. This is a gentleman who was asked to go to leave one school, went to another, helped turn it around. Tice Elementary is a fantastic school at this point, very much the staff there and his leadership of that staff. So the reward was, we turned around and asked him to come help us with Mirror Lakes. He graciously agreed. And by the way, as you know, he received an award last week, and Mr. Courtney, help me with the name of the award, but it was...
Sunspr.
Yeah, and it was, he was recognized again for his efforts in front of FADS and FASMA. So having said that, Mr. Courtney?
Thank you, and the senior turnaround principal will put on his last seat now, needs, so that makes me a bit... Thank you for having us here today to share what school improvement plan for us, before thank you. We appreciate this very much. You should really quickly, before I go into that, in relation to the meeting, like, of a great number of people. Thank you, Mr. Boach. That's the work of a great number of people at Lehigh, at Tice, from leadership down to paras, support staff, cafeteria, everyone in those buildings, working together so we could create some just wonderful things for kids. And then, of course, the biggest winners in that are our kids, who we help them to step forward. So they're really the light behind that, so I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. In talking about our school improvement plan, Mirror Lakes Elementary this year, we are all about rock stars, and so you're going to see that theme incorporated throughout the presentation. And for those of you viewing at home, if you watch the screen, occasionally, there are some symbols and some things that go along with our rock star theme. You may have already seen some of those groups you may know, some of those groups you may not know, but if you email me, I'll email you the list and see if you were correct on naming them and guessing them all when we're done. And there may even be, I may have to progress, monitor the group and check on that at the end, so we'll see.
All right, sounds good.
We'll see. Here's the demographics of Mirror Lakes Elementary School, and you can see the wonderful faces and kids. A very diverse school, it's very large, to go from Lehigh Elementary at 500 to Mirror Lakes at, we're over 1,100 kids, a lot of kids, a lot of staff, but a lot of great things are happening, and it is a great place, it is a rock star place. On that last slide, too, you may have seen 30% of our kids have, are a student with exceptionalities, and that's a large number. And it creates some great opportunities for everyone to utilize great strategies to teach kids how to learn. Great teaching is great teaching, no matter what, and being able to utilize that together and have those conversations around that is powerful for learning. Our three goals this year revolve around tracking standards, teacher engagement, and academic improvement. Goal number one, tracking standards, and it's a little more than tracking standards, it's also about instructional alignment. I know you all know, I've heard this board say it many times from each of you, how important alignment is. Obviously, as a district, it's important, it's even more important, I think, at the school level, grade levels, and all those pieces. We're going to do that and accomplish that for our school improvement plan through PLCs, the first box there. We're doing that by getting the master schedule under control, and that means having sometimes some really tough discussions, letting teachers have those discussions, and then us joining those PLCs and having those discussions with them, so we can create a master schedule that maximizes student time so teachers can engage them and students can be engaged. The next bullet you'll see on there, under PLCs, is liaisons. Liaisons is something I started a couple of schools ago, in having more leadership, people that can help lead PLC groups, lead grade levels. So it's different than a grade level chair, where a grade level chair is taking care of grade level business, copies, field trips, and some of that business stuff of their grade. Well, the liaison is helping to manage that data and that information to make sure they have things so we can not have to have teachers as weighed down trying to pull and do. They help to make sure they have all that, so when they have PLCs, they can do, they can manage that time effectively and efficiently. The other part of that, the liaison, the job of this, which goes back to the school improvement plan, is the liaison's job, or a key piece of what they do, is making sure the focus and the mission, we stay on focus and on target. So they know, because they meet with me, all those liaisons meet with me weekly, and we have our PLC. It's important to PLCs, the principals, leaders, that we have a PLC, too, and they are our PLC, making sure we stay in touch, we know what's going on. Sometimes we attend at their invite, but oftentimes, for myself at Mirror Lakes, we kind of sit back a little bit, and did the same thing at Tice and Lehigh as well, and let the teachers do the work. Let them be involved in that when they need me, they know my door is open, come see me, and we'll be glad to help. And then the last one there is backward design. I tried to find a really great picture for that one, but if who can tell what that is, that's someone moonwalking. Get it?
Yes.
Anyway, sorry. But that's my backward design. So an important way to improve our school, and the things we need to do is by backward design. So what do the kids need to know? What are the standards? And then planning the grade instruction back from there. Professional development, everything you see under professional development, they're differentiating centers, critical friends, Kagan cohorts, thinking map pieces, those are different things, not necessarily mandated to everyone, but specifically targeted to where teachers have strengths or teachers have needs, so that they can improve their student achievement. So we did some school-wide pieces, we've done some before things, some after things, and so people are getting the PD to support to make sure we can meet the needs of the kids. And then progress monitoring, an important piece, we have to know what kids are doing, where they're at, so we can continue to adjust, and that's where Castle comes in, and Performance Matters using that data, win time, which is our intervention time, I know you guys are familiar with that, and then having common informative assessments that teachers are developing and coming up with during their PLC times, that they're agreeing on, that they're talking about, and the great power in there. This is, excuse me, a picture of tracking standards and what some of the grade levels look like when they meet together to have their PLCs and talk about what they're doing. Those are kids' names on those post-it notes in different colors, and I know that's, again, something you guys have seen before. We didn't reinvent the wheel with what we do, but we share in those great practices as many other great schools in our county are doing, and great leaders, and share those things. And they use that information to put kids where they need, to make sure they're getting the skills and things they need, so we can meet these goals with that. The school-wide averages for FSA testing, this is just a little bit of data and a little bit of show for some key IDs and details. You can see there's some green on there, and there's some red with what we're doing, what we're looking at. The green, obviously hip, hip, parade, the red, ooh, ouch, some things to work on. We don't look at those as ooh-ouches, we feel the ooh-ouch, we need them to feel and sense that urgency when we look at this data, that's important, but not in an ugly way, but in a, oh, this is the reality, and then face that brutal, the brutal facts, so that we can create a plan and move forward. And the same thing on the next one, anyone see on that green chart there? Death leopard, sorry. I'll continue on, sorry, I threw you a bone there for those of you who didn't know who that was from the 80s. And a lot of this is 80s, I apologize. I'm a product of the 80s. This next piece of school-wide data, we're looking, again, more information, a lot of green on there, but also some red. Even the green areas, though, we don't just brush those off during PLC times, we talk about the green areas, too. You can look at RL 2.5, 59 to 64%, that's a great increase, that's a great positive. We still got a long way to go, so what are we going to do about those areas as well? Goal number two, increasing student achievement and teacher engagement, that's what that's all about there. We're doing that a variety of ways. PBS, increasing the positive things, catching kids doing good things, creating plans, utilizing those pieces, staff bucket fillers, teachers telling other teachers what you're doing great, and other staff members, it's a whole community piece. Going along with the rock star theme this year, you'll see that picture up there, Ms. Johnson, she's one of our third-grade rock stars. What we're also doing is being very specific. I remember when I was in college, I went to USF, and at USF, the big thing they look for when you walk around doing are using specific praise. And specific praise, we all know, is using the kid's name, what did they do that was so wonderful, and why, or what was its impact, and how powerful was that on the organization, on the classroom, on the whatever was going on. And so our leadership team, we've spent a great deal of time doing PD together about that, because I need them doing that with their rock star teams, and then teachers doing that with each other. This was a recognition of her, and we also took a little farther to maintain that theme, which builds community. That's how school improvement plans and goals get reached, when there's community, there's a sense of togetherness, and we're all in this together. And so for this, she got the Come Together Award by The Beatles, so that was hers, because she brought her team together and then coupled her team with another grade level. We went to her classroom, we played music, that song, while we're in there celebrating that together, her kids celebrated that, because their students have Rock Stars of the Month as well, but also so do our staff members and all staff. Again, you can see there's a student on there as well. The student management plan, we had to make some alterations to that, we've adjusted that to hold students accountable, to make sure everyone knows, here's the expectations, we're doing staff surveys, are students doing what they're supposed to be doing, and when they're not, holding them accountable for that. And then, again, more PD, which ties back to goal number one, we're not doing some separate PD, all of this PD ties together. We've got to be smart, we don't have a whole lot of extra time, and that's where that is. Staff surveys on positive behavior support and student management. Here's a beginning survey, this was after we presented kind of the new plan, what it was going to look like. We still had some people in disagreement. We'll give this same exact survey on the mid-year, I just haven't given it yet, to see where they're at on what it actually looks like, but this was another quarter one, because we're meeting monthly to talk about their discipline concerns, because when students get, are having in crisis and making poor choices, and they're sent out of class, they're out of class for a long period of time, they're missing instruction. And we want them in the classrooms getting instruction, and so that's what this goal represents and goes back. And this first quarterly one piece, it is going swimmingly well, very exciting, the teachers are very excited about it, and student time has increased. Goal number three, this is a very specific one, with fourth and fifth grade learning gains from 61% to 64%. 64% is, 61% isn't a horrible learning gain piece when you look back historically, but we want more. We want more, because the more they're gaining, then the proficiency score goes up, all that runs together. We're going to do that through data analysis, with targeted resource teachers pulling kids or pushing in, and then, again, progress monitoring, making sure we know what kids are doing through formative assessments, informal pieces, so that we can keep adjusting that instruction, which they do through their PLCs. Here's some quick data, again, this fourth grade data, 18% of the kids at learning gains right now. Ouch, we've got a long way to go in fourth grade. I have a young team there, but I have an excited team, a team that's ready to do the work necessary, and we have a plan for that, and we're going to increase that student achievement. Fifth grade, a little closer to the goal, but still, again, some work, again, we have a plan for what we're going to do with them. Progress monitoring using the four PLC questions, and I'm going to quickly go through this, I'm going to leave this slide up there, while I kind of share with you an example for just a minute of what progress monitoring really looks like on a daily basis at a specific grade level. Students take the STAR test at the beginning of the year, okay? Big test, it's got lots of stuff on it for that, and we're going to talk about reading for just a minute, okay? So we're going to find out who knows and who doesn't know, what don't they know? The teacher's going to review their own data on their self, they're going to look at that and go, okay, well, how's my class doing? Where do I sit in this pot? They're going to meet with their PLC, and everyone's going to discuss where we all sit. So where's my neighbor sitting that's across the hall? Where's the person? Where do we all sit in this project? We're going to discuss everyone's data, and also ideas for the standard, and we're going to create an instructional plan. So we're going to create what's going to happen, the prescription for these students to be successful. So I'm going to take third grade reading standard RL 3.1, 1.3, that's a heavy standard, character traits, how story characters, their decisions and their actions impact decisions. The group, you're going to group the students by their skill, by what they know, what they don't know, and begin instruction through centers with informal checks as the progress monitoring. So for example, we're going to have a teacher-led center. The teacher-led center, we're going to, the teacher's going to use some science or social studies materials that's leveled out for the kid she has. So the first group I have, if I'm the teacher, they may be some of my high flyers, so I might use a, the Lexile score might be higher on that set of texts, or I might go ahead and use the two pieces of text they're going to have to have ultimately anyway. Or for my lower groups, I'm going to, again, adjust that text for them. We're going to teach that lesson during that 15, 20, 25-minute piece, and then at the end, I'm going to progress monitor. I'm going to ask three questions orally, and I'm going to find out, do the kids know what I not? And I'm, do they know it or do they not? I'm going to make a little check mark on a little clipboard that I have, do they know this? Well, while that's going on, I'm going to have kids on a computer doing compass. Compass is star-generated, can start generate the specific path, but I can also, as the teacher, go in and go, I want them to work on character. So if that's the one I know, I've already looked at my data with my team, we've decided my kids need this. So that's what we're going to do, so I'm going to prescribe for them what I want them working on. They're working on that. Well, how do I progress monitor that? How do I know, and how do I assess that? Well, at the end, there's a screen, it's called the portfolio screen, and kids know to have the portfolio screen up, so when the dinner bell rings, or, call the dinner bell, sorry, when the bell rings, it's time to switch. Sorry, anyway. So when the bell rings, then the teacher knows, she looks over at those screens, and she's writing down those percentages, boom, 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 on this little clipboard. Now she has two pieces of data, she's just progress monitored again, kids have been doing fun activities on the STAR and learning, but at the same time, we've got something that tells us what's going on, we've progress monitored. There's an independent center going on, that independent center, we're using some text also to support the standard, and they're doing that on their own. In the teacher one, you're using science and social studies, and understand that difference, because we want to make sure we're getting those content area pieces, that's important. But in this independent center, I'm using just a basic literacy piece, again, leveled by the group I have and the kids I have, we're going to teach that, and then I'm going to assess them or progress monitor the end of that by having them do a thinking map. I'm going to have them do that, and that's going to be the progress monitor. I've just assessed, and I'm going to know, and I've got now three pieces of data, all within this basically hour to hour and a half teaching and learning block. And let's say there's even an AR center that's going on, kids reading independently, which kids need to do, they're working on what they need to do on their levels, but I've given them a purposeful reading assignment. I've said, when you are reading today, you're, I want to know what character, I want to know what that character's impact or his decisions were, or something, so when they're done, they're also going to do an exit slip, which could be a very simple two or three sentences that they leave and give me, or journal entry that I can review later, and maybe even respond back and forth with, or maybe they do also, maybe they decide they want to use a different thinking map. But there's another, and I've got four pieces of data, the teacher reviews all of the center data collected, adjusts their teaching for the next days, adjustments could be more rigorous text, some kids got it, but I want to make sure, because I'm going to use a more rigorous text, because I know they're going to be up against that eventually anyway. Maybe I use multiple texts, or I move them on to another standard under that same concept umbrella. I'm not going to waste kids' time, if they got it and I know they got it, I'm moving them on. The next two or three days, depending on the standard, we're going to continue to cycle through that and cycle through that, progress monitoring them in a similar fashion each of the way, until students have it, until they have it. But then we're also going to give a common check, okay? We need a common check to find out, do they understand this? So that one is going to be another progress monitor, which was developed through the PLC as by the teacher, it's only three or four questions, maybe five at the most. It's a simple piece, they're going to give that, and see, do they have it or do they not? Again, the kids that have it, we're moving them on, the ones that don't, I'm keeping them with me, being real specific with what I do and how I pour into them. After two to three weeks, depending on the concepts being taught, the district check then is given, which that's the kind of the bigger one, okay? And we do that, and that's with intentionality as well. We need that mixed in, so it's not just, and there's only going to be three or four questions about my character trait piece, but it's mixed in with those other pieces, which is similar to, again, the format they're going to see later on down the road, and that's ultimately, let's admit, that's what real life is all about. I don't get anything in isolation in my job as a principal. I mean, I could go through my day today and tell you, the kid tried to throw up on me, he actually tried to, and, I mean, intentionally. I could go through, but there's all kinds of things, nothing happens in isolation. So, kids need that as well. So, we've just progress monitored again. We're gonna look at that data as a team in our PLC and see also, hey, who on my team is really strong with this? I'm gonna listen to their ideas. I'm not so strong, I'm gonna seek their help out. So, again, we continue to build community and build those pieces as well. So, that kinda concludes what I wanted to share with you in reference to our school improvement plan and progress monitoring. So, there's not any questions. Mr. Toyber, I'm thinking that for sure you can tell me who's in that bottom right-hand corner of that.
Andy Warhol. Are you excited about your job?
Oh.
You know, it's funny that when you first started out and you were, and you started out on the first two slides, I don't think there was anybody in this room that doubted your excitement and your intensity, and they were glued on you the entire time. So, I really appreciate the excitement, the intensity that you bring to this. You believe it, and it shows. Board members?
And that's why he got the award. Thank you, Dwayne.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have to say a special thank you. One of the biggest gifts that I believe has helped Mr. Courtney with those turnaround schools is that he builds up his staff, and he works alongside them. And to be a turnaround principal, that's really what you have to do. And I just appreciate that, and I've appreciated the pleasure of having the opportunity to work with you. And we're very fortunate and blessed to have you with us.
And in all sincerity, Dwayne, you know that was Andy Warhol that drew that for the Rolling Stones.
Yes, and that's why I said yes. That's why I wasn't gonna argue with you in reference to the Rolling Stones, but...
Who is that? What group?
That's the Rolling Stones.
Rolling Stones, that's right. Because Mick Jagger.
Well, see, this is the neat thing. In this, if we were progress monitoring, he knew an even greater depth of knowledge of this. So, he knew, so I could move him on. He'd be in my faster-moving, little faster group.
I'm also a child of the eighties. Thank you, Dwayne.
A little too much, sorry, a little too much, okay. Can I just share one more really quick thing while I, if I can? It goes along with this, about the Rock Stars of the Month. The Rock Stars of the Month, and as you saw the picture, and this is another one, I have to give these to some people downtown here. We're also sharing that with our district-wide community. We had Jimmy Phlox sent us, we had our AC out in our two-story building not too long ago, and he sent us people and took care of business. And so, these are for two of Jimmy's people. And with that, not only do they get the rock star and a song, but they also get a little rock star trophy as well that we are wearing. So, good kudos to our maintenance department, as many of the, many other departments that support us. All these things happen because of all of this together. Your support, the superintendent's support and direction, and, I mean, to look out and see these faces that are here, our directors, our executive directors. This all happens because of that, and so, we appreciate that very much.
Jimmy, welcome to Cleveland. All right. All right, Dr. Atkins.
All right, thank you very much. And again, as he, as he's exiting the stage and bringing on our next principal, which is Susan Caputo, and I think Benita Springs is what I have next. So, why don't you come on up? I do wanna, I know that you picked up on the fact that, you know, the progress monitoring and what he is doing is for the purposes of really driving instruction. And then, we're looking at trying to improve PLCs and having teachers collaborate, and, you know, so I really like to see working with each other in terms of who's strong in this, who's strong in that, and sharing collaborative practices. And I think that really increases instruction across the district. So, another, another wonderful turnaround opportunity. Again, this is Benita Springs and Susan Caputo and her team, so Susan, we'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Mr. Chairman, board members, Dr. Atkins, and community members. Before we begin, I'd like to introduce people that I have with me. I have here Jillian Fiora, who is our Assistant Principal. Melissa Robinson is our Tech Curriculum Specialist. And I'd also like to introduce a little, a member here in our audience, cheerleading squad here. We have Mrs. Lori Ramsey, and she is our Academic Coach. Because of these colleagues and the leadership team I have back at the school, I believe that we are making the progress that is needed for our students and our teachers. And with that, let us begin. Here we have the school demographics, our total enrollment. We have a K through five enrollment of three hundred and eighty-one students. We have a very thriving pre-K population of a hundred and ten students. And that is a strong feeder program for not only Benita, but also many of the South Zone area schools. Very well-run. I give the pre-K program leaders full credit for that. We have a free and reduced lunch of ninety-seven percent, minority ninety-four percent, ELL population of thirty percent, ESE eight percent, and 504 of three percent, just to give you a breakdown of our community here. The next slide, we, shows the data, the scores of students proficient with the FCAT over the previous years. And we're using the latest, most recent data that we have, which is thirteen, fourteen school year, and that's forty-eight percent, in order to create our learning, our goal. And the goal is in the top right-hand corner. You'll see that we, our first goal is to increase learning gains on the FSA English Language Arts to fifty-one percent, so a three percent increase. So, we established that, and then we focused on our barriers for this school improvement plan, the monitoring, the way we're going to monitor, and the evidence of completion. So, our barriers here are the limited language and the vocabulary development of the students. And what Ms. Fiora shared with me a few weeks ago was that when we send out Parent Link, and Parent Link, actually, our parents tell us that they appreciate that. They tell us at our PTO meetings, at our literacy, we have literacy classes for our parents, and any functions that they come to, they really, they like that. Seventy percent of our population of parents prefer the messages in Spanish. So, think about that. Because when our children go home, seventy percent of our parents cannot help them with their homework. And so, we're it, and we have to make sure that we are it for these children. Monitoring. So, how do we monitor? And just as Mr. Courtney said, and Mr. Courtney, great presentation, our, the way we monitor. Let me first say that when I work with my teachers at the schools, I talk to them about monitoring assessments. And what I've compared it to is an analogy to going to the doctors. Okay? We all go to the doctor's office, and when we're waiting, we're hoping that that doctor is reading our file, because the doctor needs to know what we're about. And so, when we go in, let's say with our neck ache or a back ache, if that doctor prescribes without knowing what we're about, or asking for an MRI or CAT scan, they're shooting in the dark. So, we need to, I compare it to testing, to assessments. All different kinds of assessments we need to assess students. So, we're not shooting in the dark. So, what do we use? Well, much as Dwayne said, the STAR reading and the ELLA, okay? And that is, you know, again, gives us a lot of information. It aligns, it has, from there, the students can go to Compass and have an aligned learning goal, and I'll talk further about that. The district checks that we use, the summatives, we have summative checkpoints in writing, in science, and in math. We do mock testing to see, you know, smaller tests to see where our students are, all kinds of exit tickets, informative questions, conferencing, oral reading fluency, and then we have targeted, specific instruction for our students who have MTS plans, so that we're hitting their individual needs. And what do we look at for completion? Performance matters, item analysis on the students and on standards. We've begun CASL, and we use data binders teachers and students do. Okay? Pictures say a thousand words, so here are some pictures to show you. Now, here, the first pictures on the left are of small student instruction. But I wanna begin with what is expected in classrooms. So, I'd like you to think of an inverse pyramid. And at the top, we have the I do, in the middle, the we do, and at the bottom, the you do. So, in the classrooms, when I walk in, what I see is the teachers instructing, whole-group lessons. And then, after that, they go to, that's I do, and then we do. Teacher's instructed, teacher gives assignments, and students are working, whether they're working in partners, teams, or alone, and teachers are walking around assessing, how are the students doing? And then, from there, the lesson goes to small group, the classroom goes to small group, there's teacher instruction, students are on AR, compass, or working on assignments on their own or in groups. That small-group instruction is differentiated depending upon what the assessment has told us, what the teacher has looked at, and what the teacher knows about these students. We also do intervention. Ours is called ROR. Every one of us, I, myself included, we teach for forty-five minutes a day, maybe in reading and math. And the teachers have planned out what it is they want us to work on, and that's done by grade level. I happen to have the pleasure of teaching fifth grade. And then, the picture on the right shows a student speaking about her project. This is in an art class, and I wanna brag for a moment about my art and music and PE because they truly are something extraordinary. They get the student, well, all of our teachers are asked to get the students up and talking, articulating, discussing, and questioning, but art, music, and PE integrate the curriculum and standards that are taught in K through five. And this is a young lady who is doing that. Here, what we have is children working together and thinking maps. We have focused in three areas on professional development this year, and that has been CAGEN structures, thinking maps, and Whole Brain Teaching. All of them are good strategies for any students, but particularly for our students at Benita because of the LY need. And so, they incorporate the language and the movement in their teaching and in their learning. On the right-hand side, we have support staff. Our support staff work with our children. They are important to our school. They are trained, so we hold trainings for them so that they know, and they can question us and ask, what should they be doing? And then, top-left-hand corner is our speech pathologist, who's working with a small group of students. She's actually working outside. Here we have the, I thought that you would be interested to see how we're doing. And so, these are the checks that our teachers have agreed to use. And here, the orange line shows how the percentage of proficient students across the district, so a district average, and the blue line shows Benita. And we're pleased with these results. We celebrate, though, I want, I want to share with you that we celebrate any gains. We celebrate, you know, a five percent, a ten percent, that, because we're, they're working so hard. And, and they want, it's important that they feel that, that they're validated. So, this is third grade, ELLA. Next slide is fourth grade. Now, I want to explain to you here, in the fourth grade, last year, this was, they were, of course, third graders, fifteen of them scored a Level One on the FSA. And so, we know that we have to focus on these students and this group of teachers. And notice the increase there.
That's great.
And then, we go to fifth grade and our percentage there. Now, this is one picture, you know, one snapshot, and, and so, but I thought that would be interesting for you. Okay? I would, at this point, like to turn it over to Ms. Fiora, and let me explain. Ms. Fiora was hired last year during the first semester. She came in and she took the position as academic math coach. She has a way with teachers and a way with students. And so, what she did was, she worked alongside them and took care of, worked with them on the pacing, but she also offered to go into their classrooms. And that's what she did. And what I heard was teachers asking for her. So, to her credit and to the credit of our teachers, we are impacting students. So, turn it, take it away.
Okay, looking at the previous four years, we also looked at that with math, and we focused on the 2013, 2014 year to set our goal at fifty-two percent. Our barriers, well, basic computation skills as well as reading comprehension, because that is our, the language is a barrier. So, with reading comprehension, it is impacting their math because of word problems. Now, monitoring, we just purchased STAR Math, and we're gonna use this, this program to monitor students monthly. And this STAR Math program, actually, there's reports that you can generate that actually give, it's a detailed report on individual students and a grade level as a whole, and they can see where they need to guide their instruction, lead their instruction. Then we have checks, formative assessments, and math fluency checks. It's very important, and we emphasize this with all teachers, that it should be daily, and teachers need to provide immediate feedback. We believe in perfect, perfect practice with fluency. Evidence of completion, just like reading, we have performance matters, CASL Standards Tracker, and data binders. We have data binders for both teachers and students, and this is a way that we hold teachers accountable for looking at their students' data, because we expect them to bring their data binders to all PLCs. And then, students are also able to track their data, monitor it, and goal-set for motivation purposes. Here are some picture points in math. Standard-based instruction. We believe in the backwards design of planning. So, we want, we first look at, what do we want our students to learn? And when we look at that, we think, okay, here's a summative, now, how will we get our students there? So, it's a discussion with the teachers, and we talk about formative assessments and exit tickets, exit slips that we can, we want our students to be successful or feel successful, whether by gains or proficiency. So, how can we make our students feel successful along the way? And how do we get them there? How do we, how do we reach their full potential? Now, I am the Assistant Principal this year, but I also am taking on the math coaching role. This is dear to my heart. I love the teachers I work with. I do go in the PLCs. I help and I guide them to run it. I make sure that I update them with research-based strategies, programs that maybe we wanna look into, or I also update them with FSA information. We hold both vertical and horizontal planning, so horizontal grade level, and then we also do vertical planning. So, I hold three, four, and five, and we talk about standards and the progression of standards, and how one grade level can help another grade-level students feel successful. Now, talking about that, we, when we meet horizontally, so with the grade level, we talk about how, how is data gonna guide our instruction? So, we need to remediate, but sometimes there's not time. So, 'cause we need to get in the amount of standards, you know, that we need to cover, you know, within that year. So, what we do is, we talk about small-group instruction through centers. We hold daily centers, and also through our intervention time, which is an allotted fifteen minutes in the beginning of the day. So, we look at that, and we look at the standards that really need, we need to address with the proficiency, and those students that have met proficiency, we extend their learning. So, we hold their group and we say, okay, now, how can they apply this using a project? Or how can they, how can we use higher-level thinking skills so they're able to go that next level with application? So, that's how we address small-group instruction, and that's how we address differentiation. We also, oh, I'm sorry. The cross-curricular, in math, we do that as well. And here's a picture to the right. It's our math, our art teacher. Again, he's actually, he's doing a project and addressing his art standards, and it's a birdhouse they're creating. And he also has up as the objective of a math center with measurement. So, we also ask that our math teachers, they have a reading standard always on their board. And this is because that's one of our barriers. We, math teachers are reading teachers as well, and writing should be through math, too. So, now I go back to differentiation, so we do look at data to drive our instruction. We also look, with Whole Brain Teaching, we had professional development this year on that, and it's a way that you use kinesthetics with memorization for kids, and it's also an engagement strategy. And then, CAGEN. I am a CAGEN coach, so I'm lucky enough to be able to provide professional development to my teachers. And they do ask for me to come in their rooms, and I know I'm an evaluator this year, but I do tell them that, you know, this is different. This is different. I'm coming in, I'm gonna help you, we're gonna co-teach together. And CAGEN is very important to our school. And one of the things is, there's a lot of research behind it, but also, there's the acronym PIES. So, we wanna separate group work from cooperative learning. And I tell my teachers all the time that PIES is so important, because P for PIES is Positive Interaction. So, that builds their social skills, which is for college and career-ready. So they're prepared to be professionals and learn how to argue without arguing. And individual accountability, that's so that no student in that classroom can hide. And we really emphasize that on our, with our teachers. So that's either by whiteboards, random selecting of students, exit tickets, very important. And then we have equal participation. So equal participation's time or turns, and that also brings in the accountability part. And then last but not least, we have simultaneous interaction. And simultaneous interaction means, like, if it's a pair group, 50% is listening, the other 50% is talking. And to hold that student accountable for active listening skills, which should be taught, the teacher holds them accountable. So instead of saying, what did you think, they'd say, what did your partner say? So that kind of holds them to, you know. And we also make sure that our students answer in complete sentences. We're really working on grammar, too. Let's see. And then to the right with support staff. And we train our support staff, and we also train our teachers how to work with support staff. So we want a scripted program, because some of these paraprofessionals aren't teachers, don't have teacher backgrounds. So we have to be careful with that. And our paraprofessionals are expected, when they're on the clock, to work with students at all times. Here, just like reading, we have our school, how they performed on the checks and how the district performed on the check. This is just a talking point when we start our PLC. Then we delve deeper into the standards and the item types on this test and the types of questions. The next grade, fourth grade, this is actually, like Mrs. C. said, this is our focus grade. We did have fifteen students score at a Level One. We were able to pass along thirteen of them, or thirteen of them, to fourth grade, but they need those accommodations and they need that support. We actually have 44% of students in fourth grade, they're either ESE or LY. Forty-four percent. So this is a grade that, you know, our teachers, they're amazing teachers, but we need to support them. So we really focus on gains instead of proficiency, because we'll get there, but it's a slow, and they're doing amazing job, and the students are. So we're really looking at, with their data folders with students, and really encouraging them on their gains and how they're doing with that. And then fifth grade, as you can see, they went down on the last check, and that's actually something that we're doing right now in the PLC. We address that with our intervention time, and that's how we're meeting the needs there. So, okay, back to Susan.
Well done. Okay, the next goal, third goal, is if we have the teachers track the standards and progress monitor the students, then gains will happen. And also, if students do the same. And so what you see there is, on the right-hand side, is a picture of our data wall. This shows their very simple colored charts. Each grade level has a colored chart there, and every student has an index card. On the index card are dots, very simple dots, and the teachers have put the appropriate, the color of the level that they scored at. On there, we have the scale score and the percentile rank. And then at each star, the teachers come, and as you can see, the young lady there, Ms. Cesna, and she is changing the card, so moving it to a level. When we first did this, it was really eye-opening, because a third of our students were in the red level. And so, you know, again, it's discussion, and I wish you could hear the discussions of the teachers, because it's really powerful. And they're all of our students. It's not just your students, you know, or mine, it's all of ours, and what are they doing, and they're excited. The other thing is, our children are excited. In the mornings and the afternoons, they come throughout the day because they want to go on the news to share their thinking maps. And so we have them. They go on the news, that's part of the featured morning program. And then, of course, we conference with students. The students set their own goals, too. And I've conferences with students, as has Jillian, and of course, the teachers. And then we have the evidence of completion. Okay. And here, we have, we've done a lot of collaborative work, that's what it's about. That's, on the left, is a picture of the data chats. I will tell you, I always provide food. Food is great for having, you know, they like that. But I left them today, and there was a workshop going on with thinking maps for our ELA, Science and Social Studies teachers in three, four, and five, and I left them laughing and talking and eager and proud of themselves, and really proud of themselves. On the right, we have PLCs Mondays, as Jillian says, and the teacher leaders are the leaders of these PLCs, and we attend and are part of, but they take it over. And then PD Wednesdays, Wednesday mornings are our professional development time, and we, we present, teachers present, and we have outside people who come in. And then this is a snapshot of one of the students' journals. All of the students have journals, they're called interactive journals, and I give credit to, actually, Candace Alavito, who came out and showed our teachers how to create an interactive journal, and teachers have gone to her workshop, too. These are, the parents have appreciated these, because this is their text, this is what they go home with and we can refer to when studying, when doing their homework, when And here, our last goal is about teacher engagement. And I hope that that's, you've heard that throughout, because it's all about the teachers believing in themselves. I am, I do believe in communication, so they receive a weekly, a newsletter with information and hopefully something inspirational every two weeks. They also, we meet freak all the time. Teachers, the new teachers attend apples meetings with Ms. Fiora, and that is every other week. And there's a lot of support. I want, the teachers know that if they have conferences, when they have conferences, that we're there to attend with them also. We do weekly classroom, we do classroom visits all the time, observations, and we started what's called walkabouts, which you've probably heard about. And actually, tomorrow, Mrs. Ramsey is taking the second-grade team, and they're going into the third-grade classrooms and visiting. And that's a culture that's being created there at the school, so that they can talk to each other about what they're seeing and what they're doing. And we will not be a part of it, I'd love to be, but we will not be, because it's, you know, it's not meant as evaluative. And again, pictures of teachers talking and discussing. On the left, ESOL, two district ESOL support staff who have come in to visit and wanted to see what we're doing in fourth and fifth grade with the ILET reading program. And the teachers, by the way, like that very much, as do the students. And on the right, we have a PLC meeting, that's with, that one is a leadership meeting, and that's with Claire Cutting and our teacher leaders. And our mission statement, which is stated every day. And that's it for Benita. Thank you for giving us the time.
Board members? Ms. Dozier.
Did I hear you say that everyone in the school goes into a classroom?
Yes, ma'am.
Everyone?
Yes.
You're talking about...
Not custodians, not, but all parents, all administrators, all of cour, you know, teachers, not cafeteria, not custodians. We all teach. We spend time about fifty, I spend about 45 minutes a day. I take mine out and I work with them in my office, and I do reading intervention or math intervention, and love it.
Interesting. That's very good. I know that there are, I was going to, I applaud you for doing that. I know that there have been some schools where actually the custodians and the cafeteria workers...
Yes.
Actually, you know, took part in that as well. And, you know, that really creates like a atmosphere of everybody has the interest of the child, everybody working together to promote it, and I just, you might want to consider adding that component as well.
Actually, we took an idea from Franklin Park last week. Franklin Park started, put multiplication facts. Every, everyone in the school, all adults, have a multiplication fact clipped, you know, pinned to themselves. And so I took the idea, Mrs. Hayes actually was telling me, took the idea, and I asked the cafeteria manager to wear one, and of course, then I became the lady with the problems because I stuck a few on myself, and it, anything we do gets them excited, really and truly, but yes, I'll take that idea.
Ms. Fisher?
Well, I was going to suggest, I was going to make that comment about the food service workers and the custodians, and I wonder if any of your people in those areas are doing any mentoring, like they are in many schools?
We do have a mentoring program, but not our custodians or our kitchen cafeteria. The office staff will work with students. We have a mentoring program, we have, our guidance counselor is working with the Bridge Fund Rotary members, high school students are coming in.
And we also have a PBS mentoring program, check-in, check-out, and this is for the students before they reach MTSS. We want, this is a tier-two strategy, just like MTSS, but we want to see if we can reach the students by having that attention. Some children are attention-seeking, and some children just want to, you know, maybe need, need the expectations re-taught, or maybe a small-group individual. So we do have that, where a student will check in with somebody in the morning and then check out with the same person at the end of the day. And the teacher, throughout the day, they just have a little sheet with the goals, and they just circle how they did. So there's something to talk about at the end of the day.
Four of the students come up to us at the end of the day.
Right. They say all it takes is one significant adult in a child's life.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Ms. Morgan?
Yeah, well, everybody said what I would like to say. First of all, kudos for the fact that everybody is in the classroom, I think that's wonderful. But I also want to talk to the difference in Benita Elementary and what happens with the turnaround principle. Benita had a wonderful, beloved principal, but it is a very, two years later, two and a half years later, is a very different school. It has gone from being a quiet school to being a noisy school. And that is, that's terrific, because it's a culture that, of silence for children in the presence of adults, and there's a big, big difference. There's, there's, I've only seen it once, but evidence of incredible enthusiasm among a cadre of teachers who got an opportunity to witness something that was being done in a different school and coming back and teaching their peers. So that's, you've brought a lot to the school. And kudos to you.
Thank you.
And you, for what you're doing at Benita Elementary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Dozier?
Well, everybody brings in their own piece to the table, and you have definitely brought in the more specific concrete sequential that needed to be brought in at Benita Springs. And what's neat about that little school, I wish it could be my house, I just love the building, but families are so welcome there, and families feel comfortable walking into, walking into the office and being part of that. And that is extremely critical. And I agree, the kids need to be noisy. When you have such a high number of LY students, they need to be talking. And I just really do appreciate the atmosphere that has, I had the privilege to visit last year, and I'm looking forward to coming out sometime this year, but just is really encouraged. There are high expectations of the staff, but nothing that is threatening. High expectations are good, and everyone is definitely working together. So thank you.
Thank you.
For all that you do and the others.
We had a fiesta back a few weeks ago. Over 400 people attended.
See?
Almost all of the staff, the faculty, families, they danced. Our music teacher brought in an ensemble from Columbia. And then one of the parents was the DJ. We had food from Maria's Restaurant in Benita. We didn't do it as a fundraiser. I want these parents to come and feel this is their place. And the secretary, my secretary, has been part of Benita for quite a while. Her husband is a, works at Benita Middle, and every day, she goes out to the Walker's Gate to speak to the parents, so she is our liaison. It's truly a community.
And I think that's long overdue, you know? It's felt throughout Lee County, and it's just been something that's been there for years, that our schools have not been the most welcoming place for parents, especially from different cultures. And I think it's very, I mean, it's just very commendable that, you know, they need to feel that this, that, you know, we're all, we all know, and there's not a doubt in my mind, in the least, that every school has the best intentions for all of our children and all of our parents, and they, and all of our administration, our staff, from the top principal all the way down to our, to our janitorial services, they, they do everything they can to make people feel welcome, but there's that air that we're just not getting there, where there's that ominous feeling that, you know, and again, whether it's just the institutionalized way we fence everything out and all the way we do, but it's, it's going to take a very cognitive and a concerted effort to bring down those walls and to make them feel, because once you get them there once, you know, then, and they realize, this is really good, and they see all the things we're trying to do for their children, then they get it. But, so I commend you and I commend your staff. I mean, it's really, and I, and I hope that that catches on, and Dr. Atkins, when you share with, you know, in all the learning groups with all your administrators, that they all see that, that, you know, we have a long way to go, but I really believe that there are certain schools, more than so, but everybody's taking a recognition and working very hard, and I appreciate the efforts, and that's great.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for all your support.
Thank you.
Jane?
Hey, thank you all. And as the next group makes its way, Ashley Lamar and the Royal Palm Exceptional Center staff come on up to the, to the dais. Just want to mention a couple things. Of course, woven through their presentation is the fact that the school improvement plan is definitely driving, you know, the driving force behind that, if you saw that woven in their presentation. And then I just have to say that, you know, in a little bit of preparation behind what Dr. Bohatch is involved in with some of our alternative, alternative discipline strategies, I was doing some research, and it was really pleasant to see some of the things that they just quietly mentioned in there, very much research-based, the check-in, check-out, and the tiered approach, and then the creation of that positive culture that you see at Benita Springs Elementary. I mean, it's not just nice to hear, but it's research-based, so. Now, having said that, I'd like to turn it over to Ashley Lamar and his staff to talk about the Royal Palm Exceptional Center. So, Mr. Lamar?
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Good afternoon, good afternoon, board members. Joining me today are Christina, Dr. Christina Trudersky, she is the TIF teacher leader for Royal Palm. And to her right, we have David Donahue, he is our business partner from MetLife. So we're going to be talking to you about a few things today. We had a, just a, an exciting and really wonderful opportunity rolling into this year in the school improvement planning process to really be very thoughtful about how we approach this. And from, from my standpoint, my experience, really always experienced a tremendous level of support from the school district, from the board, to the superintendent's office and school development, and down into the schools. So my, my observations and experience and philosophy on that is, I thoroughly enjoy the support that I get from the district, so I like to respond in kind and support the district as well. So taking that approach, you're going to get to a feel and to hear who the, who the we are, but we were going to do everything we do in line with the district strategic plan, here and after referred to as the DSP. So in doing this, our first step, really, in the planning, we wanted to align one of our goals to strategic goal number one of increasing student achievement. And what we saw, that, you know, a lot of objectives, I don't have to give you an education on the, on the DSP, you know that very well, but objectives point one, two, and four really seem to fit very well with what it, what it is that we want to accomplish as a school of active and engaging learning. Mr. Toyber and Ms. Morgan, you had mentioned previously that Benita is now a noisy school. We're a noisy school. We really like it being a noisy school. You've probably heard me say, we don't want to spend the first two years of a child's life to talk and walk, and the next 16 to sit down and shut up. Doesn't make a lot of sense. So we, engagement should be authentic, and it should be evident from the moment you walk into a classroom. So we really have gotten everyone on board with that. So that was goal number one. And then in number two, increasing the retention of the effective and highly effective employees at Royal Palm this, this past year. Schools seem to go through cycles, as we've noticed, and Royal Palm was no exception to that last year with probably about 50% of the staff retiring. So there were some seats to be filled, for sure. So we needed to attract some, some teachers and also retain the ones we have. And really, I've asked Mr. David Donahue to be here today with us, because he's been a big part of that, one of our focus areas this year, and I'm getting a little ahead of myself, but really has been staff appreciation. In really looking at some of the surveys that we've had previously, that, that was a notable area, specific to Royal Palm, was to what extent have teachers felt appreciated? And I, I'll, I'll be honest with you, I took personal ownership in that, and what extent have I been letting teachers know how much I appreciate them? So that has been a focus area for me personally as well this year, but was thinking about it over the summer, and a thank you goes a long way, but a thank you with a sausage biss- it over the summer and a thank you goes a long way, but a thank you with a sausage biscuit accompanied with it really goes a lot further. So to that end, Mr. Donahue has really been very giving of his time and his treasure. I called him up over the summer and I said, David, we want to do a few things for, for back to school. And I had just a few small ideas. He said, well, you know, Ashley, let me think about that and get back to you. He called me back, it may have been the next day, but it wasn't very long. He said, actually, I've, I've thought about it and I want to take it a step further. So I kind of picked myself up off of the floor and said, wow, okay, wonderful. So he came in and we talked about it. And really it's, it's just been a wonderful partnership that we're, we're enjoying with David. And then here in, to goal number four, becoming the model continuous improvement organization. And really what we have done here is staff empowerment. And school improvement, you can find it very telling if you go into a school and just ask, who's responsible for your school improvement plan? I would, it would be my hope that if you came to Royal Palm and asked that, wouldn't matter who you'd ask, they would say, all of us. We're all part of it. So really, I can't write the plan and have everyone say, we're all part of it. So we, we had a process, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Truderski here in a second to talk about, to really gather the input from, from everyone in the organization.
I think it's on, can everybody hear me? All right. It was very important for us to identify who the we was in the school improvement plan in that entire process. The we is not the administrative team, the we is not the leadership team. The we is every stakeholder who participates within that building. That included our students, our parents, our community sponsors, our business partners. We really needed to get buy-in from everybody. Our parents are very active in their students' educational process. We have a extremely unique population at Royal Palm and having the parent support that we have is critical to those students' success. So it was very important for us to reach out to our parents and find out, what are your expectations of us at Royal Palm? What expectations do you have of us in regards to your students and to your children? And how can we meet those needs as well as the needs of the overall school, keeping in alignment with the district plan? So we reached out to the parents, got their feedback through our SAC meetings at the end of last year and at the beginning of this year, and took that information into account as we started to begin to develop our strategic plan, excuse me, our school improvement plan, as well as looking at our business partners. How can you be a part of this? How can you help us support our teachers? Because, and, and we'll get on to this a little bit later, but really the way that we look at things is if we can make our teachers the best teachers that they can be in the classroom and we can surround them with the supports that they need, that's going to make our kids perform the best that they can perform. So really everything that we focus on is really that teacher development, that retention piece, and keeping the good teachers that we have in the classrooms and making them great. So once we looked at what, what do all these stakeholders have in mind for Royal Palm, we really wanted to do that Plan Do Study Act, that PDSA model. And we, after all of our stakeholders were together, we started looking at the data. And, and the data is what the data is, you can't change that. This is my first year at Royal Palm and, and honestly, I was very impressed with what the data was with, with my perceptions of coming into Royal Palm, which have been completely changed and erased and I couldn't be happier to be where I am. But looking at the data, we had to build a plan and we wanted to be very systematic in how we built that. There are a lot of initiatives that we could have brought to the table, but then you get teachers that go into overload. And you've got this new program and this new program and this new program and, and being a form, you know, being that teacher in the classroom, I know that there were times when I'm like, timeout, wait, I, I just need to breathe and figure out which end is up. So we were very specific in what, I even hate to use the word program, initiatives that we brought to the table. And we really got our teachers solidified in those before we added something else. And that was really done through the coaches. Myself as the teacher leader, we also have an instructional coach and a reading coach. We're constantly looking at the data and talking with our teachers to, how, how can we be in there to support you? What can I bring to you that's going to make your classroom more successful? So that was really that Plan Do Study Act that we look into. The teachers meet on their own for their PLCs and provide us data feedbacks. We meet as a leadership team from there and say, you know what, we're seeing a common thread here. We need to address this with some professional development because it's coming from the teachers. So it's not us pushing PD on teachers, it's them asking for it.
And as you can see by the large print, this was, this was a format that we used in the strategic planning process, district-wide with the SWOT analysis. We had every department within the school do this in, in looking at the strengths and the opportunities. And then when the department leaders came back to the table as a leadership team, we, we looked for common themes across that and really looked at what were our opportunities? What could we do ultimately in an efficient manner where everyone had input that was going to drive us towards our goals? And that, that's what we really decided to focus in on, rather than a lot of people doing a lot of different things and, and kind of having the same goal. Everyone is aligned towards the same goals, everyone, because that way, as she had mentioned, the professional development that we offer is timely and it's specific. And it is in response to what we see as the need and what the teachers express as the need. And then of course, which leads us to our goals. With the academic goals, we have the literacy goals and the math goals, teacher engagement goals, specific to teachers feeling appreciated. We, we have a variety of things that we're doing along with that and, and some different surveys that we're using to be able to gauge how the teachers feel. Progress monitoring, the first two schools had talked a lot about progress monitoring. We could just echo a lot of what they had said. And lastly here, what we want to talk about is student transitions. What we've seen historically is students reach a level, if you will, when they're at Royal Palm, where they are ready to make an attempt to transition back to a traditional school. And, you know, perhaps see if they could achieve the same level of set, level of success on fewer supports. And we're really focusing in on the transitions because there's a, there's an intensive level of support that is provided at Royal Palm that's not provided at the traditional school. And to go directly from an intensive level of support to not nearly that same level of support sometimes creates some confusion. So we've come up with a plan to have a true transition to where students can successfully transition from Royal Palm to a traditional school, if that's the desires of the committee and the families and the students. And to reduce the recidivism so that when students do transition to a traditional school, they are, they are able to, to function successfully. Questions?
Board members? Ms. Dozier then, Ms. Fisher, sorry.
Well, I, I really appreciate you focusing on that transition piece because, you know, oftentimes students are just kind of put out there and they don't have that preparedness, if you would, for what the expectations are and all of that. I don't know if you go one step forward and they have any type of mentoring for every student that.
Yes, ma'am.
Transitions into, back, so you do.
Yes, that is part of our, our new transition plan.
Okay, good, good. I'm glad to hear that because that would give them a type of support system when they're in a new environment. And so I, I know that you definitely have challenges with that particular school. I appreciate the business partner for being a part of that school and I appreciate everything that y'all do because of the challenges that are there. Those students definitely need that, that personal piece, caring piece, personal, individual piece. So, thank you and thank you for also putting in the front of the students' faces that they also need to be learning instead of just being housed there. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Ms. Fisher?
Well, I'm just going to piggyback on that a little bit and thank you for what you do and I am coming to ride the bicycles and, and on the desks.
The invitation stands for all of you.
I know that traditionally some kids may have stayed at Royal Palm for years. What would be your average length of stay now? I mean, is there a, are there some kids who get there who really progress to the point where they can transition back within one school year?
It largely depends on the age when they first enroll at Royal Palm.
So the younger ones?
The younger students, what we've found are, are able to transition back to a traditional school more successfully. Students who, for, for whatever reason, enroll in Royal Palm for the first time in, say, middle school or high school, they tend to stay longer.
And I just wanted to compliment you on your business partner and your community involvement. And I know that last year when I attended the luncheon at the country club, it was really heartwarming to talk with the parents and see what level of involvement they had and how important the school really was to even their lives at home. So thank you for all you do.
You're welcome.
Ms. LaRiviere?
Well, and I do, Mr. Lamar, I want to go back when I visited earlier, you offered the possibility of having one of those bikes up here so that we can, we need to see about investing them because they're really great. We could, whenever we feel like we need to get a little exercise back here.
Come up with some.
Would come in quite handy and great for those of us who have knee issues. Thank you that you, I like the fact that you do the SWOT analysis. That's very good for going through and picking things out and it's good to see that. And you're right, kids do need to have the opportunity to move and they do need to have that opportunity to talk. So often I think children get punished for being children and it's not necessarily because they're trying to do something wrong. And I do thank you and kudos to the school for the history and tradition of taking the students to Broadway Palm to experience a show, to know what it's like to dress up, to have a cloth napkin in their lap and to, and then again, to go to the country club and have those experiences. It is amazing to watch these students rise to the occasion and become ladies and gentlemen. And so, thank you very much for affording them that.
You're welcome.
Anything else, board members? Thank you. Now moving on to our district, district strategic plan, we'll start with focus area two, Dr. Atkins.
Hey, thank you, board members. At this time, we'll start with focus area two, which is engage families and leverage community partnerships. And Ms. Chandler will do the presentation and as she prepares, I do have to, to give her some kudos because last Friday, she organized and we implemented Operation Bus Driver Appreciation and out at every one of our bus compounds, she had organized, had district staff, school based staff out at these compounds with the action Drive Your Success. We're leadership teams from the district office and the, the schools actually greeted our bus operators with a little, little breakfast bag and, and just out there to just be supportive in general. So I did have a chance to talk to Mr. Morgan, he said it was very well received. And that was, it's just a part of trying to, to bring everyone into the, the Lee County family and, and so I want to compliment on her on that effort.
Good afternoon, board members. I feel like this was such a great segue by our turnaround principles into community and parent engagement. I almost feel like they've done the presentation, you've seen everything that is right with community and business and parent engagement. And so they've done all the heavy lifting, I think, in advance of focus area two. Mr. Courtney, I want to try to use my positive behavior support. It's been a long time since I've been in the classroom, so I appreciate you, Mr. Courtney, Ms. Caputo and Mr. Lamar for everything that you are doing in our schools and bringing to our district. It's hard to just sit still in a seat when you hear about these things happening in schools, you know, it's just exciting. And so I'm honored that you are my colleague and that we're able to work with you. Thank you for all that you do and I know that everybody in this room is feeling the same sentiment right now. Okay, so focus area two of our strategic plan is engaging families and leveraging community partnerships. We're going to talk about the progress of a couple of objectives and outcomes that we've been working on these last couple of months. Objective 2.3, develop an aligned network of community, business, faith-based philanthropic partners that work with the district to support students and families. Again, we've just had three great examples of that. But specifically outcomes four and five to bring you up to date on, which are increase the number of school, business, community partnerships. I don't want to steal the thunder of human resources, but over the next couple of months, they're going to be bringing to you a job description for a senior manager of sales and marketing. That position first came up, I think, by you, Mr. Toyber, Mr. Toyber and Ms. Dozier when we were initially briefing the, the naming rights and the possibility of capital revenue in that process. And since then, we've had an opportunity to look at what other districts are doing and we know that we have an opportunity to develop sources of revenue and naming rights and advertisement and endowments and in, in development for scholarships for Grow Our Own. And I think, Mr. Toyber, you said it best, we all know that position's going to pay for itself. And, and so I, I don't want to steal the thunder of what's coming in the next couple of months, but we're excited that that is a key foundation of objective 2.3. And in supporting that position, we've established a couple of commonalities along the district. There are a lot of moving parts, as you've heard today, in volunteers and business partners and parent engagement. And it's important that as a district, particularly one this size, we have some common collection and reporting tools. Like Susan just had 400 parents at a family event. Ashley hosts an event every year. And it's important that we harness those results and we know who's contributing and being engaged in our district so that a position, for example, like a senior sales and marketing manager is able to go back to those individuals and determine how much more they might want to be engaged, but also so that as a district and as a board, we're able to appropriately recognize the people that are engaging with us every day that sometimes, many times, we just don't know about. And the other process of 2.3 is to capitalize on common value relationships. So we continue to progress in our relationship with Lee Memorial Health Center, the American Heart Association, also with philanthropy. Obviously, we give to the United Way, but we know that we can begin to work across the community to develop people that have a philanthropic interest in education and particularly, particularly providing scholarships for our teachers. As you know, board members, we are expanding our teacher academies. And while it's one thing to offer those graduating seniors a tentative contract if they come back and teach with us, wouldn't it be able to fund their, great to fund their education with scholarships so that we are equally invested in them as they will be in us? Outcome one, the percent of five-star Golden School Award recipients will increase in that same objective area. Right now, our baseline for this particular outcome is 72%. I don't know if you noticed in your notes, board members, but this particular outcome for me personally is a little frustrating because the state does not allow DNF schools to apply for Gold School or Five Star status. When, as you know, ironically, it's those schools that have the most mobilization, you know, valuable business partners, and yet they're not able to be applied for and be recognized for the work that they're doing at that level. But we press on despite the state standard that does not allow them to apply. And we do have an outcome goal of increasing our five-star and our Gold Star schools. Five-star measure schools and they have to report on several domains, business partnerships, family involvement, volunteerism, student community service, and their school advisory councils. And again, you just heard three great examples of schools that are capturing that every single day. At the district level this year, we have paid staff that is supporting schools in their application process. So schools are actually going to submit their applications to the district on May 1st and we're going to vet those applications, make sure they're meeting all the criteria so that the application, once it does go forward in June, is more likely to be a successful application so that we are increasing that baseline. And the Gold School Award is only relevant to middle and high school, but I just wanted to throw in this slide real quickly because you think about the sheer size of a high school and everything that is on a high school or middle school principal's plate, and then you look at what they're documenting and what they're doing in return for this particular recognition. And we had many, many schools that were recognized last year, so I just wanted everybody to see the work that goes into documenting the engagement already at the school level. Objective 2.2, remove barriers to community and family engagement and develop mutual trusting relationships among parents, students, schools, district staff and community. And in the strategic plan, it says that the district will identify new and effective ways to connect with families and provide them with valuable information and opportunities for meaningful engagement. When we went to the community forums, a common theme, and I know you all heard it too, was communication. And it was particularly valuable for me to participate because the other common thing that I heard was frustration for parents that had children in different grade levels, like in elementary school or a middle school and a middle school and a high school, and try. trying to navigate to find the same information on each of those websites. It was somewhere different on each site or sometime it wasn't there. And I don't know if you've noticed, but the district website, as well as all the school websites, have had a major overhaul. And the navigation is consistent from school to school and district to school. You can also notice that the parent portal is one parent portal on every site. And if we update something on the parent portal at the district office, it instantly updates on all the school sites. So, it's the same customer experience as parents are navigating to find information from the district to the schools. So, the consistency there is important to accomplishing that objective. The app, I don't know how frequently you all use it, but it also has a navigation feature now and a contact feature. So, if you select a school out of the directory and click on the address, you're able to navigate directly there. No more getting lost between schools. I am guilty. And then, of course, the contact feature in the directory, you're able to email teachers or call the school directly from the app, making it easier for parents to engage at the school level. New for this year that we're most excited about is what came out of the committee work for focus area two. And it was a discussion about doing things to families sometime instead of doing thing with families. I think that sometimes, school districts all across this country are guilty about that. So, the parent engagement survey that we will roll out for the spring of '16 actually asks parents how they might want to be engaged, what are the things that are most likely to bring them to campus, and what are the things that they might be doing at home where they're already engaged and we're not just capturing it. If you remember, I sent you a quick email a couple of weeks ago. Just in the month of November, there were 93,000 checks of grades in the Parent Link app. So, we should never just assume that parents aren't engaged. We know that they're engaging in all sorts of levels, particularly at home. And if that's any indication of what's going on at home, I think we have a lot to capitalize on as we move forward. And then, objective 2.1, respect all students and families' diverse perspectives, values, cultures, abilities, and beliefs. Last year, we had four staff trained in the National Network of Partnership Schools. That is the research-based Epstein model of parent engagement that is actually out of Johns Hopkins University. This is very timely because what the Epstein model does is that it asks schools to pick a goal out of their school improvement plan that they're writing right now. I think that Duane mentioned that one of his goals was to increase fourth grade and fifth grade learning gains. And then, they choose from a variety of research-based strategies for parent engagement and community engagement in six domains. And then, with their action teams or their school advisory councils, they begin to write their parent and community engagement strategies based on these research-based activities that they're able to choose from, from the National Network of Partnership Schools. So, this year, all of our Title I schools are members of the National Network of Partnership Schools. They just recently had their training on the Epstein model and received their materials so that once their SIP plans are complete, they're able to start working with their SAC committees on building their parent and community engagement models. It's very exciting. So, just quickly, a summary of focus area two, some successes. We've had some improvements in communication mechanisms, identification of a capital development position that we hope to be bringing to you sometime, creation of the Family Community Engagement Survey is in progress. We hope to roll it out to parents after the new year. A common data collection system for schools to use for volunteer hours and donations. It's nothing fancy. It's just an Excel spreadsheet, but at least it's common from school to school. And we also have district staff that we have managed to stretch across departments that are supporting the five-star, the Gold School Awards and our volunteer initiatives. I don't know if you've noticed, but in the last couple of weeks, we have a volunteer page that went live from our homepage where if you're interested in volunteering with the district, you're able to click directly from the homepage. And that page is growing every day. It's in development and it's just going to get bigger and better. We already have established relationships with agencies of common interest that we continue to build. And then, of course, the investment and staff support for that Epstein model with our Title I schools this year. And we hope to see some great research-based parent engagement strategies coming out of that. Some obvious challenges with engagement, consistent data with many, many moving parts. You know, it's difficult to capture all the volunteers in the concession stands, all the volunteers that showed up Saturday for the yard work at the school. There's always going to be a lot of moving parts to that. We hope to get to a place where everybody self-reports their volunteer hours. And so, the school, the burden's not on the school to get the sign-in sheets and count heads. And then, a common collection system for parent attendance and of which events, again, the concession stands, the soccer games, the yard work. And the measuring the aesthetics of engagement versus boots-on-the-ground engagement. Some of the issue of engagement is semantics. Very traditionally in education, we've always measured engagement by the boots on the ground, the parents that actually showed up at the school. But we all know that it's much more than that now. And parents can be engaged in a variety of ways, particularly in a community that is a shift-working community. And at 6:00 at night or 6:00 in the morning, we have a large majority of parents that are either coming to work or going to work. So, we really have to begin at the leadership level and at the school level to rethink how we provide opportunities on engagement for our parents. And we do hope that that parent engagement survey in the spring will shed some light on that so, because that'll be a great opportunity for parents to provide that type of feedback. And that is all for focus area two. And I am going to turn the microphone and computer over to focus area three and Dr. Bohatch.
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Martin. I'm going to provide you with some data related to focus area three. Can you work this slide for me?
I can.
Okay. First slide, two of the outcomes for the DSP related to focus area three, reducing referrals and reducing out-of-school suspensions. Okay, next slide. Okay, what you're looking at now are elementary referrals by incident. Real interesting, I met with Cabinet a couple of weeks ago and they asked for a drill down of the data. Working with Mark Moore, we pulled this up and to me, it was really, really surprising. Four types of offenses. Four types resulted in 81% of all referrals. Disrupted behavior, don't go yet, insubordination, peer conflict, and safety. I see the reaction here, Ms. Fisher. Okay, next up, middle school, same thing. Three types of offenses resulted in 63% of all referrals. Disrupted behavior, see the pattern, insubordination, and then profanity. Okay, next up, high school. A little different with high school. We see the disrupted behavior and insubordination as well, but electronic device, skipping, and tardies. Okay, five types resulted in 71% of all referrals at the high school level. Okay, let's move on to OSS now. And you can see the correlation between the referrals and the students receiving OSS. Elementary, four types resulted in 84% of all out-of-school suspensions at the elementary level, disrupted behavior, insubordination, peer conflict, and safety. Okay, you see the pattern?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Middle school, three types of offenses, 63% of all OSS, disrupted behavior, profanity, and insubordination.
That's ridiculous.
Finally, high school, five types of offenses resulted in 76% of all OSS, disrupted behavior, fighting, insubordination, peer conflict, and profanity. Okay, so, there's a summary, three-year trends, elementary referrals, elementary OSS, middle and high. So, all right, next slide, some positive information here with regards to ALC. You're looking at a five-year, five-year numbers related to placements at ALC, about a 34% reduction since the 10-11 school year in the number of students referred to the Alternative Learning Centers. So, all indications are that this year, the numbers are continuing to go downward. So, from 1,279 to 10-11, down to 845 last year, those are the students that were recommended for alternative placement. Okay? Okay, next up, all right, some action steps here. We've had a lot of discussion at the Cabinet level and, you know, Dr. Atkins, even at dinner last night, we were talking about, you know, alternatives to suspension. You seem, your eyes seem to light up when you, when you take a trip down memory lane to Dunbar Middle talking about that ATS program. You want to talk a little bit about that real quick?
Well, first of all, it's Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School.
Okay. You noted that.
Okay, well, it's, you know, basically, you know, we came to the realization that, and the research backs it up. Board members, I'll send you, I'll send you a report that really does a really good summary of some of the research that's out there as it relates to suspension, out-of-school suspension, expulsion in terms of how effective those are as deterrents. And what we find is they often are not very effective deterrents. So, what do you do? And actually, at our school, we'd started with a year, the first year I went in there, it's something like 620 out-of-school suspensions. And I decided that this simply wasn't going to work and we developed an alternative to suspension program. And in order to do that, you had to get, you had to get student, staff, parent, community buy-in in order for that to take place. And we did that. We put together, we really made some changes in our code of conduct, and that was our school code of conduct, you know, because the district code of conduct, you know, I was a little bit of a rebel as a school principal when it came to following some of the district stuff that I didn't think worked real well. So, we had our own way of doing things, which ended up working real well. Rather than an out-of-school suspension, the alternative would be that the student would come in and become involved in a community service type of activity in the morning. So, they would go work with Lee County Parks and Rec for the morning part of the day. Then, they'd come in, back to the school, and they would work with community-based organizations such as Quality of Life, the Ida Baker Center, just to name a few. And, you know, those folks, Jerry Ware was somebody who was very helpful with us. Mr. Mohammed was very helpful in working with our program. And then, the end of the day was to have those students engaged in instructional activities so they didn't lose momentum. So, absenteeism improved. It reduced our absenteeism rate. It decreased dramatically our suspension rate. Our student achievement went up tremendously. Parents loved it, teachers loved it, and the recidivism was very low because students didn't particularly want to be involved in that particular program. Now, that took the total engagement of stakeholders in the process of putting this together. So, we involved community organizations, parents, teachers, in the development of this alternative program. And what we find here, you know, in the research, that's what effective programs do. Now, that was one school, but we want to do something district-wide so that it arms our teachers and our principals with effective, effective programs that address student behavior. In some cases, it's consequences that works, but in other cases, it's just what is the root cause? What is causing this type of behavior and how can we improve that behavior? You know, again, we heard in some of the other presentations about, you know, the connect, what is it? Can't remember the first part of it, but it's where you, the kids, you connect, you connect up with a kid on a daily basis. You know, it's just a monitor, yeah, check and connect. Thank you, there we go. These types of programs make kids feel a part of the school community. And even if you do go to an alternative program, like, let's say, for example, that you, you got to a point where we had to send you to an alternative setting. In my mind, you were still a Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School student. So, even though you went to the alternative setting, I'm going to visit you at that setting. And then, you are rewarded for positive behavior and, you know, the principal would actually, you know, recognize those students. And I would go out to the school and be a part of that recognition ceremony and let them know that you're going to be back in my school real soon and I'm sure going to be a positive, you know, positive member of our Paul Lawrence Dunbar Middle School student community. So, there is so much that we can do district-wide. So, when Dr. Bohatch brought Cabinet this information as a part of, we review the strategic plan every week. You know, we take a section of it. And when his section came up, it just got us real, he said, you know, trip down memory lane, yes. But the possibilities are what, that I thought, in terms of how can we arm our principals and our teachers so that we can actually have effective programs that work for our kids rather than just doing a reaction that the research says just doesn't work? So...
And I think the key, and you mentioned it earlier, was, you know, changing the culture at your school. And with that, you had resources from the district office to assist. So, I think that's going to be vital along with professional development. And I talked to Rachel Gould last week. She's got a pretty cool program going on at Mariner Middle. They call it the base program. And it's similar to what Dr. Atkins had back 20 years ago. And it's, if a student commits an offense that merits two days out of school, the parent has the option of selecting the base program, which would land them four days in school. They've got a certified teacher in there, ESC supports, and they're keeping the kids in school. I look forward to looking at Mariner Middle's that at the end of the year, but there's a lot of cool stuff going on at there. And obviously, based on the data, we need a lot more to continue. The insubordination disrespect across the board, I don't know if that was a surprise to the board members. I see no's, but that could be a problem in society with youngsters and, but elementary, middle, and high, kids are being referred and sent home for being insubordinate and disrespectful. And data is powerful. And I think that the biggest takeaway for me, you know, looking at the data and reviewing the data, is knowing that we've got supports in place currently, thanks to the Suncoast Credit Union, providing $100,000 in second-step curriculum. You know, we've got 30 schools on board now and I'm an expert on second step at April Liz. And second step addresses social, emotional learning. So, I think we got to get to them. Go ahead.
Well, first off, Dr. Bohatch, I think the PLDMS program back with Dr. Atkins, I think they made a movie. I think it was called Holes, I think, but an alternative. But I digress. You know, I think this insubordination issue, I think, you know, is something that it is, I think it is, you know, pandemic across all grades. And I think that we really need to seriously have the intervention-type programs, you know, that's, you know, alternative to suspension or to a referral, but a programs that actually identify, because, I mean, this isn't going away and it's a culture change. And I don't think, and I think if we don't embrace it as a school culture, you know, and set, draw the lines in the sand and then stand fast and support our teachers and our school-based administrators when they do, you know, draw the line, you know, this battle's going to be lost.
This is tough stuff, you know, in speaking with Cabinet and Dr. Atkins, you know, you've got a, you've got a student who's misbehaving in class, disrupting the learning of 20 other students, that kid needs to be removed. Okay, the answer isn't home, but what can we provide at the school, you know, intervention-wise to assist? And, you know, you got to keep the teachers happy, the principals happy, the parents happy, you know, you're juggling everything, but...
Just a couple of things I want to mention. You know, we have a, we certainly have a teacher retention issue that we have to address. And just, I just want to read a sentence here. "The effort to manage troubling student behavior reactively and punitively often diverts valuable administrative time and contributes to teacher burnout."
Yep.
So, you know, we have to be supporting our teachers in the classroom with programs that actually work. But also, what goes on in this article, it talks about schools where you have effective programs and positive climates. You have a principal that promotes a very positive climate, a very positive culture, but what the result is, you actually have lower incidence of discipline in those particular schools. Whereas, the principal that was more focused on kind of the reactive, punitive, we're going to get tough, you actually, it actually caused...
More.
...a worse climate and more incidence of discipline.
Yeah, we need to be thoughtful as we move forward, you know, with regards to restorative practices and, you know, there's a lot of talk about eliminating OSS across the board. You know, looking at districts across the country that have done this and done it rapidly, they've been met with some resistance and some failure. So, we've got to be thoughtful, strategic, come up with a plan. You know, Jeff Spiro grabbed me last week. He said, hey, man, you need to form a steering committee, an RJ Steering Committee. We need to sit down, map this thing out. He's really good at that stuff. And so, I called my expert at FGCU, you know, Sandy Pivalka up. I said, can you be on the committee? We got Captain Miller from the Sheriff's Department, April Thompson. And we're going to, we're going to come up with a presentation for Cabinet, hopefully in January, with a plan and rolling RJ out in a strategic manner, pilot schools, that kind of stuff. Because we're going to need buy-in from the schools rather than saying we're going to go across the board and do this. Teachers need help. We just can't say, you're stuck, we're eliminating OSS. So, the PD is going to be huge to getting staff development.
And I don't want that to be the takeaway, that we're eliminating OSS.
Oh, no!
That's not the takeaway here. It's, we want to add tools to the toolkit of the principals and our teachers so that they have more tools to deal with these types of issues.
You know, we had, we had a nice meeting with Judge Seals, you know, a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, he pulled the plug on the first visit, just so you know, transition in leadership. And it looks like the visit's going to happen in March. If Dr. Atkins decides to stay around in March, that was the, that's what the judge said. So, here, the Teske team's coming in March. So, you're going to be here in March, right?
That's right.
That's going to be the commitment. So, we'll get that on y'all's calendar, Mike Scott's calendar and Judge Teske's calendar. So, we have a superintendent, we have a sheriff, and a judge trying to get two dates available. But we're going to have it here at the district office in the Klu Klux Hachi room, and we look forward to that. And let's see what else I missed here. And that's probably it. Any comments?
Good. Anybody?
Yeah, I just, I appreciate the effort. I would sit at many student-parent conferences and would have to remind the student how to speak respectfully. and would have to remind the student how to speak respectfully to their parents. So it is, we have a culture. There are no role models for them to look at on TV or any of their gaming. Many times, I've wished we could reinvent Leave It To Beaver and The Rifleman with more up-to-date scenarios. So there can be some, people will know, oh, that's what they mean when they talk about speaking respectfully. But I don't think we're going to see that happen anytime soon.
Ms. Dozier.
Well, I have had a conversation with Dr. Atkins about elementary, because it really does concern me, the number of elementary students that are being suspended. And it's a behavior that they have basically exhibited not only at school,
Absolutely.
but it's probably a totally acceptable behavior.
Exactly.
So we're having to reteach. And, you know, one of the ways to do that is, and I'm going to just put it out here at the table right now, we might want to look at some type of an exceptional school, and I want it to be called an alternative learning center, something heads-up, moving forward, you know, leg-up, I don't know what we would call it, but something for elementary students where the students that are in some of our alternative schools could actually mentor the elementary students. I mean, what better way for them to turn themselves around than to mentor students that are on the path that they were on when they were in elementary school, and that's why they're at the middle school ALC or the high school ALC? I mean, I just see a center or centers like that in different zones, giving an opportunity for something outside of home suspension. Because so many of these elementary students, you know, they don't have any adult supervision in the home. They're supervising themselves and, you know, so forth and so on. And I just, you know, I don't know how we could put that in place, but I definitely think it's something that we need to look into. And you and I have, you know, had a couple of conversations around that, because it doesn't do any good to leave them in this, in the current environment.
Right.
Because you don't have the, you don't have enough hands in the school to deal with all the children that are there, plus the ones that have extra problems. And if we had a center and also utilized students to model, I think that, I just think that it has the potential to put us on the map, so to speak. So I certainly hope that you're already working on that.
I am, and just, if you don't mind, just to comment on what she says, why, you know, I really certainly agree with it. When I, when I was in the East Zone, you would think that, you know, high school or middle school was where I had my most difficult, troubling student situations I ever dealt with, and it wasn't. They were, it was elementary. Elementary and pre-K, by the way. And when I went to discipline students, we had no options other than suspension and reassignment. And, and so as a district, you know, I think it was a failure on our part because we had, we didn't, we reacted, we addressed a problem and moved the situation to another school, but we didn't get to the root cause. And so something that you're advocating, I think we could actually work on the student and help, you know, restore the student rather than just move the student from one, one place to another. So I appreciate that.
Great, great idea. Ms. Dozier, I could tell you, there's some elementary folks are tuning in. They're doing cartwheels in the hallways because, just like you said, there's nothing there for them. And coming into the job four years ago, I thought it was mainly high school and middle school. I get more calls on a daily basis from the elementary folks than I do from the high school folks.
Right.
Pete, I'm stuck. What can I do with that kind of thing? So that would be great if we can come up with some type of center and.
Well, I'm looking forward to it being put in place, maybe, maybe by next year.
We can get some naming rights on it and a little money off of it. Just teasing.
All right. Dr. Bohatch. And our final one is on area, focus area four.
Mr. Toyber.
Question.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Fisher. I didn't see you.
Okay. Well, I've been chomping at the bit the whole time because, all this being said, and you know what I'm going to say, Pete, when you look at the numbers, and I see all these percentages here, but of our total student body, what percentage of students are involved in this out-of-school suspension or referrals?
Those are duplicated, all right, those numbers right there. For example, Mr. Martin could have been suspended five times for insubordination. He's counted in that number. So those aren't unduplicated. So I can get you those numbers. You would like to see unduplicated or duplicated?
Unduplicated.
Yeah, see, because we've talked about this before. Because if we have 93,000 students right now,
About 5%.
That's about 5%. So do we really need a center for 5% of our students?
Yeah, we do.
When not all of those are at elementary school?
I see.
Here's the deal.
Go ahead.
Okay. Kids behave the way they do because they learn that way at home, or because they have issues. We have a lot of substance-affected children who have physiological issues and mental health issues that are not addressed. So our student service department has people who are well-trained to intervene and make referrals to appropriate agencies. So that's another thing that we could step up a little bit. And, and I'm excited that Teske is coming because I love his opening line, and so did Mrs. Morgan. And I'll say what it is. It was since when does pissing off the teacher land a kid in jail? I mean, so we really need to look at, we have an opportunity to use an ounce of prevention. If there are not role models at home, certainly, our teachers are role models at school. And the respect goes both ways. So I think that when we have those kids who are really showing out, and it's that small percentage, we need to get to that root cause and, and help have someone help them deal with those issues that are causing that. But I thank you for what you're doing. I almost feel like I've died and gone to heaven because I've been waiting for years for this whole conversation to happen. So thank you.
Ms. Laura Revere.
Just a real quick piece that I was thinking of. It would be nice to see that data and see when the incidences happen, because most likely for many, for many of our students, they happen just prior to breaks, winter break, Thanksgiving break, and so on, because many of them, their secure place is in the school. And a lot of the anger and agitation always happens. We always notice that in our schools. And so there's a lot to be said about looking, looking at the scenarios and see what we need to do to best meet those.
Okay. Thank you.
Ready?
Now. We're ready. Hey, focus area four, hire and retain best talent. Dr. Pruitt.
Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins and board members. First, I'd like to acknowledge the HR leadership folks that are here in the room that were instrumental in helping to prepare this information. Bonnie McFarland, Christine Christensen, Shelley Halsted, and Shannon Smith. And then if you have any specific questions, they're going to be available to answer them. We're going to start by reviewing the indicators that were established for focus area four. And this is the smallest part of the presentation, and simply because while it is data that in an, it's an important goal that we want to retain highly effective teachers and highly effective administrators, this data in and of itself is really not actionable. It really doesn't give us something that we can put, you know, put some meat behind in terms of what works, what doesn't work. So, and there really is no substantial change in these indicators, even if you look on the second page, when it may seem dramatic, when you look at the retention of teachers earning a manager's rating of highly effective and hard-to-staff schools, and it goes from 79 to 67. That sample size is so small. That's, you're talking about 20 teachers. So it seems, wow, that's huge, but it really isn't. And the same thing when you look at administrators at hard-to-staff schools. There were five principals involved, and for legitimate reasons, you know, that there were a couple of them that were moved. So that percentage, you know, seems drastic, but it really isn't. So this is, I'll call data that is information, but I would really rather focus, and at the end of my presentation, I'll focus on what I think are some maybe better ways to measure the success, or lack thereof, that we're having in the area of focus area four. Because as Dr. Atkins said, this is really where we're in a critical stage right now and really need to have some immediate results and action plans in place. So what I want to focus on is some of the initiatives that are going on specific to focus area four. And it won't go into a lot of detail because several of these initiatives, you've been briefed on in the last couple of months, but in, just to recap and maybe update you. And one has to do, you know, the research is pretty clear that compensation is an area of concern, while not necessarily the number-one reason, but definitely is an area of concern related to teachers. And so with the inception of the career ladder, we are addressing, and this is an evolving process, a committee that is working to enhance and make sure that the career ladder does become a, a system that really allows us to provide opportunities for teachers to be able to earn higher compensation without having to leave the classroom. In the immediate, one of the things that we're going to do is solidify a plan for current teachers to move up to the next career band. And that is because we've had it in place for about two years, and we are looking to really get some action going around that process. Effective July 1 of 2016, the plan will evolve a little bit and give some more specific things about how folks can move from one band to the next. Because again, we want to make sure that it's doable, that it really has results, and we're getting the impact that we're looking for. And then, of course, one of the big areas is looking at determining the long-term sustainability of whatever program or process that we put into place. So the concept of the career ladder and the execution of it is definitely in the forefront of our strategies. Some of the, for lack of a better word, smaller areas that we are doing in the area of retention is things like tuition reimbursement, subject ary exam reimbursement. Mid-year, we work with teachers and help to make sure if they don't have their credentials, we work with them and encourage them and give them opportunities and share with them how they can work at getting their credentials taken care of. We are very excited and working on a new onboarding program that I'll talk a little bit more about. In the area of surveys, one of the things that has become sort of evident to me in this job is that the exit surveys that we currently do, again, are not really giving us good, actionable information. So we're revising that in a couple of ways. One is we are going to initiate a new hire survey where we're going to survey those new hires within their first 60, 90 days of employment and get some feedback on what is working well, what isn't working well. Because there's only so much at the district level that we can do. It really has to do with the school culture, the administration at the school, how the teachers are received. And so this survey is going to provide us information that then we can share with schools and with the executive directors so that we can give that support or coaching where is necessary. Then we're going to improve and enhance the exit surveys so that it gives us some, some better information. And then we're going to do, because the industry is really moving towards stay interviews, collecting information on why are they staying? Why are the good teachers staying? Why are the highly effective principals staying at their work site? Because that will allow us to really capture on the idea of what is best practice.
Wonderful.
One area that we've been really successful in terms of employee retention is through the really good work that has been done in the area of wellness. And just to recap some information we've shared with you, in terms of health screenings, and health screenings are important for a lot of reasons. It gives us important information. It helps the employees so that they, you know, know, and if they had to attend to something, they can attend to it. So last year, there were 2,246 screenings. And this data, because, you know, we have to get this information in ahead of time. So this data, we're actually almost at the 4,000 mark in terms of employee screening. So we've done a phenomenal job, and that was, that department's great idea to go out and do those health screenings at the individual work sites to make it more accessible to employees. And as you can see, based on the numbers, we've gotten some really, really good results with that. And it not only gives individual data to employees, but it also helps us. And as we move forward with some of our diagnostic tools in the area of insurance and benefits, we're going to be even able to look at specific populations of folks and some really areas where we can go in and really target what program can we put in place to address this specific health concern where we have high number, you know, high-cost claims. Being self-insured, that information is, is important. Some of the other things that we're doing, we have the chip classes that you're aware of, food-for-life classes, the exercise classes. And as we told you, we initiated the financial wellness piece this past year. And then one area that we've talked about before, and we're going to have a recommendation coming to you in the future, and that is the build-out of the exercise room. Excuse me, the Insurance Task Force has again, reemphasized its commitment to having this accomplished and has, looking for us to go ahead and get that build-out done. It would give us a return on investment of six to one. I mean, the, in the supporting memo that I gave you, I gave you some really good statistics about how wellness and what it does for employee retention. Excuse me. Recruitment, this is on the forefront of everybody's mind. Where are we going to find the people that we need? When you look at the whole generational research that's being done, you know that how you attract and go after certain types of generation of employees has to be done differently because of just the nature of how they operate in their day-to-day life. So that means that we need to change our focus. Some interesting information, if you look at the different generations and how much they use various platforms of social media, YouTube, LinkedIn, Facebook, Twitter, you can see that when we're going after some of the younger folks, that's how we need to target them. And how we get our message out to them is by using social media. Because we've seen it, candidates now have their pick. In the area of education, they can go anywhere they want to go. So we need to be in the forefront and be the place that they want to go to. And that means utilizing social media. It means looking beyond what is our immediate openings that we have, looking at our data, who's retiring, where do we see that there's going to be an area of growth? What, through our job study that we had talked to you about in the last briefing, about where do we have to change what people are doing in their day-to-day jobs? And being ahead of that, rather than reactive and saying, oh, we need the job description to catch up with what the people are doing. Having as strong, as Amity talked about, you know, marketing campaign and branding Lee County schools, and this is where you want to be. Some of our current initiatives in review are the expanded marketing that we've done, working with increasing our social media presence, and doing a lot of, working with a lot of the good work out of the communications department in terms of, you know, who are we, and really getting out that positive message. We've expanded how we advertise using technology and social media. The work that we do with Gallup, the continuing to enhance our partnerships with colleges and universities, and recruitment events in our state, local, and then our non-traditional, we expanded with some virtual recruitment opportunities and saw some initial success there. So we're going to expand on that. We had a winter recruitment fair just last week, which was the first time that we had done that, and saw some success there. So really, again, thinking outside the box and really looking at some new and different ways of doing things. Some of our future initiatives are going to involve really targeting those universities and partnering with their extension offices and their, their offices of employment, looking at expanding our recruitment to candidates that are not in traditional education programs, but maybe in the College of English or the College of Math that have a passion for their subject. And maybe we can convince them that, you know, that education might be an area that they want to, to think about. And then as Amity talked about, expanding our teaching academies. Some of the things that we're looking at and gathering information about are, and where other districts have seen success, by possibly looking at some retention bonuses, we're in referral programs. One of the biggest in any industry in recruitment, employee referrals is one of the best recruiting strategies. It may be some type of sign-on bonuses, relocation packages. So we're going to be looking at all those various So we're going to be looking at all those various avenues to see, you know, what we might want to bring forward and ask for your support on. So some of the key points is that we really, in the area of recruitment, want to build really strong relationships, because that's where it does make a difference. That retention is critical, as Dr. Atkins talked about, and that goes beyond the district and actually into the schools and what we can do to support the schools in that. We must be able to separate ourselves from all the other districts and give that wow factor, and why do you want to go to Lee County? And that branding is important, as we talked about, utilizing social media and looking at, you know, different avenues to get our message out there. Specifically to human resources, we're really moving in the direction of focusing on processes. The, all of the human resource department have now been yellow belt trained, and several folks are going to be yellow belt advanced trained, and then some folks will be green belt trained. And the reason for that is so that we're really making some data, you know, driven decisions as we move forward, that we work on our key processes, continue to use technology to enhance what we're doing and to move things along faster. And then, as I, to circle back to the beginning of the presentation, to really look at, what is it we really want to measure or can measure that will give us some actionable items? Customer satisfaction, how are we doing? Are we helpful? Are we responsive? Are we getting the schools what they need? Are we giving applicants what they need? Because that's all part of being able to get those people to apply for the jobs and be interested in Lee County. How much time is it taking us to follow through and get vacancies filled? Still focus on retention rates. Substitute teacher, we've talked about that. How are we doing with that? How are we doing with our fill rates? Classroom vacancy rates? And, you know, how long are positions open? And then, we really want to look at some financial performance measures. What specifically is our return on investment in some of the wellness programs and the initiatives that we're doing in the area of insurance and benefits? You know, the money that we're spending on recruitment, are we getting, are we getting a good bang for the buck? Because that's some of those areas that we really haven't looked at. And so it's important for us to have new measures in place so that we can really ascertain what is working and what we need to continue to do so that we can hire and retain the best talent. Any questions?
Board members.
Thank you.
Ms. Laura Bier.
I just want to thank you for all of your efforts, for all three of you. Okay. I'm going to focus a little bit on the human resource piece, and as I've met with John Cecil and talked with him, he said, we are severely understaffed in our HR department. And all of your staff does an amazing job and work long hours to do what they can. And I just want, I appreciate your leadership and the way you're going, and I am looking forward to the build-out of the exercise room and all that its potential is, has there, and also that the fact that included in that build-out is the beginning piece so that one day, we will have that health clinic right next to it.
Thank you.
Ms. Dozier.
Well, I too thank all of you for your presentations on the strategic plan. I am looking forward to the build-out, and I am looking forward to, looking at the plan, and I'm sure it's going to include a health clinic in there, because...
Space will be there for the clinic, yes ma'am.
A clinic, well, the space will be there, but I hope that that's included in the build-out. I think before I support anything, it's going to have to be there, because I've been beating this horse for a long time, and the horse is still winning. It's not dead yet, so I'm going to continue to beat it. I think that this past week, I had the opportunity to talk to people from all over the state about their clinics and how they are doing, and I continue to hear all the benefits. And you know, I've had the opportunity to ask a few of our teachers, why did you take off so-and-so? Well, I had a doctor's appointment, and it was going to take me longer, so I had to take the whole day off. So what did that do? That contributed to having, to have a substitute. Well, if you have a clinic and you have extra hours and weekend hours, which they do for the purpose of trying to retain the teacher in the classroom so that they don't have to take time off, that's one of the many benefits. And because we have such a critical need right now, and we have so many classes that aren't being filled, I think that that's something, that's a consideration that we should give, because it is in the best interest of our employees to provide them with an opportunity to keep their days, not have to call in sick when they're going to do something as simple as, you know, go to a doctor's appointment or an eye appointment or something like that. So I'm just looking forward to that and thank all of you. And I'm looking forward to the marketing position, because I think that that is something that can, it will be something that we will need to monitor and make sure that the person is paying for their salary. But that's something definitely that other communities do. It does create revenue, and it's something that they can do. And I look forward to hearing more about that.
If you would just humor me, not only do we have a sun spray winner in the house, I'm a very proud communications director this month, but Dr. Pruitt missed some bragging rights. The human resources division was actually chosen by Facebook out of all of their advertisers to be featured as a success story for utilizing Facebook advertising for recruitment efforts. And so that feature story will be utilized all across the world, not just the country, but all across the world, in their use of utilizing Facebook advertising in a non-traditional way. So I'm very proud of them.
Kudos. Great job.
Dr. Atkins, would you like to address?
Just a couple of things. First of all, Ms. Dozier has been certainly trumpeting that effort for a long period of time, as we know. But I think our overall vision would include the wellness center build-out with the gymnasium, a clinic, and then even going further into talking about a wellness walk around the building that has, because you see a lot of folks walking in the hallway, but also an opportunity to walk around the building and have proper signage and make sure it's safe and so forth. And then, there's also discussions around having those wellness walks down in some of our transportation compounds. And I believe I'm correct in saying six mile is where we have plans that may start first, because we have a large number of employees there. I think we have almost 400 bus operators. And, you know, bus, transportation employee, they do their morning run, and then many of them actually hang out at the transportation compound, you know, playing games, you know, being on their iPhones or what have you, where if they had an opportunity to get in some exercise, they might, you know, very well participate in something like that. So we are certainly trying to do that. So if you can envision just, really just a wellness culture around not only this building that centers not only around that gym and a clinic and all of that, but also expands on out to some of our other places as well. I do know staff is planning to visit the clinics up in Polk County, I believe, very soon to see those success stories up there. And then, we're also going to take a field trip down to Chico's to see what they have going on down there. So lots of exciting things going on. And then, just back to one thing, Dr. Pruitt, when we talked about exit, exit surveys continue to be one of those areas for me. You know, we, I think those were put into place with best intentions. One of the things we have to do around any initiative is change the culture, you know, around initiatives such as that. And there's where we need, we're going to have, need some help from school development to actually work with our principals to make sure that we're getting a better response rate on those exit surveys, because part of the issue there was that we didn't have a good response rate. Now, the good news is, you can kind of go back to principals and say, hey, you had a few exiting employees, we need some feedback, because they often know a little bit more about the reasons why those people left. If you remember, the exit surveys are not just the exiting staff member, but also the principal. That way, we get two sets of data to look at. And when Dr. Pruitt looked at the data, it wasn't full, or it wasn't complete, and, but we can, the good news is, I think we can go back and get that information to a certain degree.
Great, thank you. Ms. Fisher?
Yes, and I just want to say thank you for being creative and being open to ideas, and congratulations on being an adept Facebook user, and to you and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to encourage, you know, the lean Six Sigma, you know, it's not just a methodology, but a culture that you're doing in HR. And, you know, it's about eliminating defect and variability, but it all points to reduction of waste and to do things better, faster, smarter, cheaper, and more effective. And that's what we need to do, is make the dollars, as Ms. Desamore continually tells us, you know, they squeak and squeak and squeak. And so we have to do, make every dollar go further, and that's just one way to do that. So I want to thank you for taking the proactive approach. Okay, thank you, guys. I appreciate it. The last one we have is Saretta Ralph for our progress monitoring assessments. Dr. Atkins.
Okay, and this was something that board members asked for, is really just kind of an update in terms of our assessment and progress monitoring plan. So Saretta Ralph will come and give us a brief, a brief on this. In addition to this, we are planning to do some, at least one or maybe more community outreach that will come out in January. That's something I think the board has asked for, and I've also heard some community ask for. But again, that will happen in January, but we wanted to start here so that we have a real good understanding of our progress monitoring and assessment system. So having said that, Saretta Ralph.
Good afternoon, board members, Dr. Atkins, Mr. Martin. First, to talk about progress monitoring, I'm going to kind of rely on Dwayne with a little his rock music when he said he was going to rely on the 70s, 80s, and 90s, his musicians. I'm going to lean on a little help from my friends. Who better to tell you about progress monitoring than principals, because they're in the buildings? And our principals did talk a lot about progress monitoring, and you heard that. But I've put some questions up here that I want to just elaborate on, and then, if you have some additional questions, I did ask three of the principals who were here today to stay around, because we wanted to be able to answer any specific questions that you had about progress monitoring. I did see some of you writing notes as they were talking, as they talked specifically about progress monitoring. First, why do we progress monitor? If you recall, with House Bill 7069, we're required to progress monitor our students that score Level 3 or below in ELA or math, and we need to progress monitor those students in one of three ways. They either have to have an IEP, we do school-wide progress monitoring, or the principal can exempt those students that are Level 4 and above, or we have an individualized progress monitoring plan. So most of our schools, and I believe Dr. Atkins provided you by Level Elementary, Middle, and High, how the schools had chosen to, at the different content areas, how they were going to progress monitor, because that was a decision that the schools made in the different content areas, because it is up to the schools to progress monitor. Our school development staff has totally left that up to the schools, and that continued to monitor is up to the principals and the school staff. And they continue to change that, as you heard the principals talk about, that progress monitoring is to drive instruction. They talk about it in their PLCs. Another thing you heard about is why they progress monitor. They progress monitor to help the student. It's there for the student. It's part of instruction. I think Dwayne even said that he might progress monitor you guys at the end of his lesson, because he wanted to give you a slight assessment. What do I do with the results? It's all about the student achievement and plans for change for the future. And I did meet with the principals, and I asked them the question. I said, what do we need to change? Because we don't, we don't improve unless we're changing. You've got to tell us what we need to improve. How do we need to change things as a district? What do we need to improve on? So I do have the three principals still here, and if you do have any questions about their progress monitoring or what they're doing specifically, I would like to hear from you as board members, because you have those individual questions and you have those people that are coming to you with those questions. So if you do have anything, I would like to open it up to you for just a few minutes. Or Dwayne, Susan, Ashley, do you have anything you want to add about progress monitoring that you didn't get to share? Ms. Fisher?
Well, when the district progress monitoring tool or test is being used, is that still the same big, long test? You know what I mean? And how often should that be taken by the students?
Let me first put something out. Progress monitoring isn't oftentimes a test. It may be, it may be a visual. It may be just the teacher doing an observation. You, I think Susan or Dwayne one talked about, in a group setting, the teacher may actually be doing instruction in the back of the class and be doing observation and have her clipboard in front of her and be observing the students. Do they have it? Are they progressing through the lesson or progressing through the lesson? Do they get it? Oftentimes, we see progress monitoring as a test, and that is something we have got to, we've got to get past that. We have got to, and you and I have had these conversations, we've got to get away from paper and pencil tests all the time. We've got to get to conversations. We've got to get to different ways of seeing how students are successful. So to answer your question, no, they're not always long tests. It may be two to three questions. It may just be a conversation.
Well, and then, just, and correct me if I'm wrong, we've had discussions about, you know, certain, certain ones that had been significantly longer, and they initially, and staff went back through and looked at, you know, redundancies and overlaps, and actually eliminated those from the assessment, significantly reducing the amount of time it would take a student to do that. So I do know that they have made efforts in that, in that arena to try to reduce the length of time as well.
Right. And I understand that, because when I was a teacher, I progress monitored, and I understand we need to do that consistently. And I did hear Dwayne say, read, you know, ask the student to read this, and do they have it? You know it. And, you know, give them a little quiz, ask them to do a group activity. Just then, I'm hearing still from parents and students that they're taking these long district mandated tests, and they're calling it progress monitoring. Maybe that's, maybe it's being given the wrong name, but it is to prepare for the FSA. And they're longer 60, 70-minute tests, even at elementary school. So am I getting misinformation from the public, or is that the district summative tool that they're talking about?
Well, first, let me answer the first part. There are no district mandated tests. You guys approved the testing calendar, and the only thing that's on the district mandated testing calendar are the state-required assessments. I want to go on record again to tell you that, and I think we're all clear on that. If there is a test that is being mandated, it's a school decision, and it's a principal, and it's a teacher decision.
Ms. Dozier?
Mr. Dwayne, would you please come to one of the mics? Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne.
Thank you.
When we are giving that longer checkpoint, I mean, you're talking two to three weeks, it depends on the concept, so it's not on a weekly basis. It's a bigger umbrella piece that I mentioned when I was giving that piece, and that's the week, again, can mingle those pieces together and really see, can they pull those pieces out? So it's, and sometimes it's longer than that. There's some of them, depending on the concept, there's some that was closer to four weeks or even five weeks. But it is an important part of that piece, because of the ultimate format which they will have to take eventually, so it becomes a piece of that and a part of that. And so, yes, it is progress monitoring, and then we've decided, and that's those pieces through your PLCs and through principals are helping to lead that charge and that conversation. I mean, that's probably not the best way to say it. Teachers are telling us, hey, I need to, I need to know this, and know how they're going to be able to do this, so can we do this? And so that's how that conversation kind of happens, and then the assessment or the progress monitoring happens.
Okay. Okay. And I get that. I mean, I get that. I just don't understand why I'm still hearing from people that they're taking these long tests. I mean, how long does a checkpoint typically, what is that? Is it a 70-minute math test?
Not necessarily, but it is going to be...
Possibly.
It could be, yes ma'am. It could be, depending on the grade level. I mean, you have such a variety for me to say yes or no. It's probably very unfair.
Yeah.
Because depending on the grade level, depending on which subject it is, which concept it is.
Say fifth grade.
But they could have a, yes, there are some that are longer, so I don't want to shoot out and go, well, no, no, that's not the case.
Right. Right.
And then, you know, be undermining what someone else has experienced either, so.
And then I had a parent call me, I guess about a week ago, and the high school student came home and said they had this big, long test again, and that even the teacher couldn't pass it. Okay, so I have no response to the people in the public who call that because I've heard what you said, I've read all the information, and from the information I have, that's not really what's happening, however.
Well, and for me.
And I said, did you talk to the teacher? Did you talk to the principal?
Right. And that's exactly what my response was going to be.
Right.
As a building-level principal.
Right.
That's what I would want, is for that to be kicked right back to me, for that parent, hey, come meet with me, and let's talk about it, let's pull it out, let's look at it. Maybe the parent and I take it together, maybe, and see what does it look like. But that's where, that is so supportive and so helpful and empowers the teachers is when.
Absolutely.
If that comes to you guys.
Right.
If it somehow gets kicked back to us through, you know, the process, so we can have that face-to-face.
Yes.
So that we can then eliminate those things that are, you know, because you know, any myth or any legend, I mean, it gets bigger and bigger when it's not directly addressed. But when it is, we can come from the reality, and maybe there are some tweaks. In an organization this size, there's going to be tweaks, and there's going to be some outliers in any way, some that aren't, you know, that are still missing and still need some coaching and some encouragement, and I mean teachers and even administrators, and need some help to make sure we're all on the same page. And that becomes a communication piece, and it's got to be done by kicking it back to us with some guidance from district people, you know, that kind of thing.
Right. And I think, I mean, I think that is a communication problem, perhaps.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, when the message is, a lot of times, the perception is from the parent, well, the school board said you had to do that. So then they called the school board, and we're like, no, we didn't say that, but am I, have you had those calls?
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. I'm going to give the floor now to Ms. Dozier. Ms. Caputo had something to say. Would you come up to the podium and speak after Ms. Dozier?
If you're trying to stay there, maybe you must.
Thank you, Ms. Dozier.
Well, my discussion is along the same lines as Ms. Fisher's, and that is that, you know, we've got to do a better job of communicating with the parents. A lot of the parents see the schedule that the board approved, and of course, because the board approved it, we're the ones to blame for all of this. It's nobody in Tallahassee that's doing it. It's the school board that's doing it, even though we say we don't have any, you know, test on that schedule. It's all, you know, it's, none of it is district. It's all from Tallahassee. But the thing about it is, we've, you know, we've got to communicate every opportunity that we have with our parents, because our parents do have a perception that the kids are being overtested, the kids, you know, that there's no quality content of subject matter being taught in the schools. Everything is in preparation for the test. I mean, and I'm telling you, a great majority of our parents feel this way. And when I look at, like, the checkpoints, there were a lot of accusations, and there were a lot of things being thrown at us saying, oh, y'all have just changed what you're doing. You know, you've changed the names. And in a way, you know, it did kind of look like that. You know, we were, they were tests, but we're calling them checkpoints. So, you know, let's call a spade a spade here, you know, and let's, you know, let's talk with our parents, let's let our parents know what we're doing, because we cannot, you know, we're out there facing those parents, and they're not calling y'all, they're calling us. So we've got to know what's going on so we can tell them, wait a minute now. Now, let me tell you the way it really is, but we need to communicate that upfront so we won't get those calls.
Can I respond to that in the sense of, so I have 180 third graders at my school.
Mm-hmm.
That's a lot of third graders. We had a curriculum night at the beginning of the year. Part of that curriculum night was to set up and let parents walk through rotations and see, this is what my kid's day looks like. We want them not only to see what the day looks like, but also, one of those stops in their time with us was to see, this is what the FSA is like, because third grade is an FSA year. There's no, we call, again, call a spade a spade. That's a year, an important year, and it's a big difference from second grade to third grade. So we had that opportunity. We communicated out, we parent-linked it, we sent notices home, we did all that kind of stuff. I had about 25, I can't remember the exact number, so I don't want to embellish, but I had less than 30 third-grade families come.
Mm-hmm.
I had the information, I had it ready for them of what that would look like. It would have, we would have talked during that evening, we did talk about concept tests, we talked, or concept checks, checks, whatever you want to call them. We talked about all those kind of things. So, and I know I'm not alone. I didn't create this wheel by any means, because I sit in a room full of other 47 other principals that are super smart, elementary piece, and on the middle and high school as well. I'm more, obviously more knowledgeable with what goes on in my own little world, and I sit in that room with those people, and these are the same kinds of things we're doing to make sure parents know, and sending out notices and using those media and those social pieces to invite and to communicate. And then the other, so the other part of that is, we need then, that same piece is, kick them back, send them to us, and not kick them out by any means, because we need them and we want them, but push them back to us, help them reconnect to us so that we can have that conversation and really help them to understand, this is what this is, and here's how it's going to help your child.
And I do think that all of us, when we get a parent that contacts us, the first question out of our mouth is, have you talked to the teacher? Have you talked to the principal? And if, you know, well, you haven't done that, well, why don't you call them first? And then if you don't have any success, then, you know, why don't you call me back?
And even with that, you know, I know our school execs, I know if we've had a piece there, kicking it to them even before it comes, even back to you, is, well, let's make sure the exec has a chance to call me and say, and so Martha Hayes, to say, hey, Dwayne, I've got a parent, she's wondering about this, whether it's a test or any item, and whoa, whoa, no, ma'am, I don't know what's going on, because I still think sometimes it's easier for anyone to say, yeah, oh, yeah, I had that conversation. Here's the information. Because again, the story is so much more often better than the reality, and that's that part, that communication piece. And so that's, and I know you guys do that, so I don't want to, please come out and see if it's going off my lips as that you're not, but I still think, continue, let's find even more ways to kick it back to us, to us, to us, and that teacher, because then we're all going to sit down with them together.
Thank you, Dwayne. Susan, would you like to add to that?
No. I understand just what you're saying, and with all due respect, you know, when I get, receive a complaint, I focus on that because I want it to be right. But truly, we are not mandated to give the tests, assessments, and our teachers, it's their choice if they want to. As far as teaching, the parents are showing them what we're doing. What I know what many of my colleagues do is have their teachers share the results with the parents during conferences. I know what we're going to do is, last year, we had parent-teacher conferences, and they weren't sure that they would show, you know? 98% of our parents showed.
Wow.
98%. So this year, what we're going to do, teachers' choice, they've come up with this, they're going to show them the kinds of things, work that they're doing, the children are doing in the classrooms, whether it's checks, assessments, tests, whatever you call it, writing, thinking maps, but, so that we can educate the parents. The other thing is, we do give the FSA. I mean, that's a fact. If we don't prepare them in some way for that 80-minute test and those FSA-type questions, goodness, how do they get ready? And that doesn't mean that we're doing that every day, because that is not the case. I visit, you know, you're out in our schools, you know what we're doing, and we're having fun. And so, that's my piece of this. So, you know, yes, occasionally, we get those calls, but, you know, thank you for turning them to us, and we'll get back to you, of course.
Lamar.
Of course. Thank you. Just quickly, when used appropriately, the information that we are getting, my teachers are so appreciative, because long gone are the days where a parent comes in, I'm not, I'm not happy with Ashley's grades. My parents actually said that a couple times when I was little. Not happy with Ashley's grades. What can I do to help him? Well, read more, do more times tables. My parents, that's all I do. We're able to give very prescriptive information. Do these CBC flashcards, do these subtraction cards. Because when we narrow down to specific standards now, parents are so appreciative, say, you know, really, where we see the struggle is right here, and we're very specific. You know what? I just happen to have a folder of activities right here. Do this 10 minutes every night. Homework is no longer drudgery, it's fun, and the kids start to see that success, and they know, they know specifically what they need to work on, to be fluent readers and to comprehend and to be solid mathematicians. And it provides a large layer of credibility as a system when we know, when we can answer very specifically why students are struggling. So we get a lot of good information from this, and that being said, this information is not used in a punitive fashion in any way whatsoever. It's coaching, and it's really helping the students and the teachers and the system to be successful.
Board members, Ms. LaRue here.
Okay. Just from what I know, and it's true, every school is different, and even within the school, it's different. Because I know of one school where first grade does not use the district-created checkpoints at all, but other grade levels are choosing to use them. And so we've kind of, you know, we've allowed this freedom for every school and teacher to use what they believe they need to do to get the best information. What it's also done is, it's put us to a point where we really can't answer the questions, because they're going to have to go to that principal and that teacher to find out just exactly what it is they are using. And high school and middle school teachers, all teachers, I would hope on their websites, they are putting on their weeks, this week, we're having the Algebra EOC. This week, we're having this test, so that a student should not come home and say, oh, we took this test. Parents should know, and the students should know what is the test that they took, and then we have a, we're better at answering those questions to see, is it a state test or is it one that was district-created? And a question I wanted to ask you, Mr. Courtney, as you were describing it, I got the sense that, and Ms. Caputo and Mr. Lamar, you may do this, this is for all three of you. If you're using the district checkpoints or assessment, however you term you're going to use, do I take it that sometimes there may be just certain sections of that assessment that might be given, and then another section of it would be given at another time?
Yes, it could be. Again, PLC-driven.
Okay.
Teacher-directed, and that kind of thing. And I remember those, I remember the, coming to many board meetings and hearing our teachers getting up, and I say, our teachers, meaning our district teachers getting up and saying, they wanted that say, they wanted that input. And that's kind of where we sit right now. And I think we sit in a really good place, because we're in some way part of those PLCs as well.
Exactly.
So we can hear, and we know, and we can help support, because that's what we're here for as administrators, is to support them. And I know even when you mentioned the high schools and getting notes and messages and things, my third son goes to Riverdale High School, and his teacher, his geometry honors teacher sends stuff home, and we're getting emails, parent links, texts, I mean, all the time with, hey, I got this coming up, here's what's going on. And not that it's a bunch of assessments, but she's explaining what it is, and what she also puts in there is, and here's how you can help your kid. Here's what you can do, or you can come see me or call me. And so a real open communication there with at least that one instance in my own personal life, which, at a high school level, which has been fantastic and clear for what's expected and what's happening, and how they're going, how we're going to use that, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Other board members? Dr. Atkins, oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
You, quickly, you asked us, you as a board, had asked us in our district, asked us to notify parents, and I know that at our principal meetings, we talk about that and how we do it. So that's, it was a request, and, you know, we felt that was important, and we're honoring that.
Great.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Dr. Atkins, you want to? Want to add to this?
Yeah, first of all, yeah, I want to say, you know, this is certainly a work in progress. I think that, you know, the board, you as a board, made a good first move in when you approved the new testing calendar, because you gave, really, you gave local control back to schools and school principals working with their teachers in terms of make the decisions. A lot of other good things have come of that. For example, I think we've had expansion of testing windows so that, because kids progress at different speeds, and so that gives schools the flexibility to open those checkpoints up at when that, when that school is ready to do so. But this is, as I said, a work in progress. I agree, we absolutely need to communicate better, and we're continuing to do that with schools posting stuff on websites. That's a work in progress. Also, we've made it clear that in January, we're going to reach out to the community and do some things out in the community to open this up. But then also, just again, getting back to research, this is a study, Student Testing in America's Great City Schools, which is put out by the Council for Great City Schools, which you are all familiar with. But just a couple of things that I think that are interesting about what you find in this, there's a number of really great recommendations in the back that really get to this whole testing issue. First of all, one thing, it says that the amount of testing that is done, the, has no correlation to NAEP results. For example, if you've got districts, states that test a whole heck of a lot, they don't do any better on the NAEP than districts and states that don't. That's interesting. The other thing that comes out of this is obviously that America is doing a heck of a lot of testing, and, you know, that's something that has continued to increase, and not just in this state, but across the country. But if you look at the recommendations, this is some of the things that we are doing and going to continue to review, the entire portfolio of tests the district gives in order to identify areas where there are redundant assessments. Begin curtailing tests that yield similar results but require additional time. Ascertain the technical quality and the uses of tests the districts are administering. We rely way too much on these multiple-choice tests. That's why you have some of these tests that, you know, pick five or six things. Instead, we should be using extended responses, writing paragraphs or so forth, and spending the time to assess properly, do a better job of assessment instead of the easy, cheap way of doing assessments. So review all these to see if they're aligned with district standards. And that's something we'll talk about, by the way, later on, is, is our district standards, and this, I don't want to get off on this, other than say that right now, Florida standards, if you look at Florida standards, they are not rigorous enough to really get into a competitive college like the University of Florida. Okay? Yet for other career paths, they may, they don't fit the bill either for some kid that wants to go to technical college or go out into the workplace. They're kind of in the middle. So you need something that has, if you really want to have our own standard that is rigorous enough to where if you meet this bar, you're definitely going to get into a competitive university. And then there might be a different standard for other career paths that people take. I think that we have this standard here in this state that kind of tries to be a one-size-fits-all, and it doesn't meet any of the things that we really need for our students. And we're missing the local components of it. You know, what are some things here locally that we want to see that's important to our community that, you know, the state doesn't necessarily have? So we have, this is just the beginning, I think. I think that, like I said, you all took a really good first step, and our schools are doing a great job with working with their, with their staffs, but, you know, the work has just begun.
Thank you.
And you're right, communication does need to improve, and I hope that stuff on websites, the parents' nights that you're talking about, us going out to the community, these are all things that we can do to communicate better.
I want to thank all three of you for doing double duty, both your student improvement plans and coming in and doing this. We appreciate that. I think Saretta, you know, deviously created to make sure she had the right bullets in the gun, so we'll excuse you and let Saretta finish up her program.
Thank you so much. Guys, I appreciate it very much. But as I said, who better to tell you what is going on in the schools than the people that are at the schools every day? With the questions that we were asking, how do we improve? And just as Dr. Atkins says, we need to communicate better. We need to continue to look at what we're doing to progress monitor. How do we streamline those assessments to drive instruction, and how do we better make our PLCs? Additionally, I have the slide with the Performance Matters, and the next slide is also with Castle, to show you what we have done to improve, to show the standards, to make them an easy visual, to be able to see where the students are successful, where do we need to be, show improvement. And then again, in Castle, for those schools that are implementing Castle and successful with that, where they are having success, where they need to have improvement, and where they continue to need to do work. So we are doing things to help our schools, to make it easier, because we know that they have many tasks on their plate, but we continue to look at their needs and what we can do to continue to improve and help their lives, and what we can do here at the district to help them. So with progress monitoring, it is still a tool that we will continue to work with, and it is an assessment, but it is a requirement that we have to help the schools to implement. And with that, I will go on and lead into assessments, and then if you have additional questions, we'll ask at the end. With our assessments for Board Policy 1.07 with Strategic Plan, 60 days after we receive our assessment results, we're required to release information and present to the board for re-
for revisions to the district strategic plan. I'm not sure we can count our 60 days yet because we really haven't got our total assessment results, as you snicker at the board table. But we are getting assessment results, and they're slowly coming out. We hope to get more assessment results in January, but we are still open as to what those results are going to look like. To help you have an understanding of what results we do have, I did ask Dr. Itzen to give us a reminder, since results have been coming out since May, I think, we have gotten results, to give us a reminder of what we have received.
So in this slide, and especially in the notes, we tried to detail all of the results that we've received to date. It's confusing, it's confusing for me, it's confusing for folks in the schools and, and for our students and parents. So a couple of comments about, about the confusing aspects of it. We have the new tests and the old tests, so to speak. So the new tests are FSA. If you think English Language Arts and Math, then you're, you're pretty sure that it's one of the new FSA assessments. And then the other subject areas like Science, Biology, US History, Civics are your, I'll call them old tests, but they're continuing because they're NGSS, right, based on the Next Generation Standards. So those will continue. The, the exceptions are, at high school, we do have a couple like Algebra I, where we have both, right? We have the old NGSS test and the new FSA Algebra I test. And the reason for that is, since it's a graduation requirement and students have to pass that for graduation, the students who started on the NGSS test are allowed to continue with that, and so the students taking Algebra for the first time would take the new test. So we will be in that transition period for a couple of years. The other thing that, that kind of confuses things is all the retakes going on. So generally, the, the first-time testing is done in the spring, and if it was only that, then we'd have that administration and we'd be done with it, and hopefully we'd get the results soon after that, and, and that would be that. But we do have the high school, and of course, exams being given three and sometimes four times per year. So that's why we see these waves of releases coming out. And generally, we look at the results internally for the retakes because it's students in unique situations, and, and schools look at those results to see how they're doing with, with their remediation programs and that type of thing. And when it's first-time test takers like the results from the spring, then that would be more of a public release. Finally, the thing that I think has bugged people the most about this whole transition is the delay in scores, as Ms. Ralph referred to. Anytime we have a transition in test scores, we do have some delays with certain things, like the standard setting, the achievement levels, but this was particularly unique year in that the, the validation study had to be done, so everything was on hold during the summer until that validation study was completed at the state level. And so that's why we didn't see any of the FSA scores from the spring released until late September. So those are just some of the things that, that we saw that were unique about this year and made it confusing, but I'm hoping that FSA, ELA, and Math, you know, that's, that's your new tests. We are awaiting some more information, and that's what I think we're going to talk about next.
Dr. Atkins, I think when you were at your training last week, he had sent a message to look at the cut scores, the proposed cut scores, based on whether we looked at them based on the commissioner's projected cut scores, or whether we looked at them based on what the board proposed, or whether we looked at them based on what NAEP would be. I think there's basically three different, three different mindsets out there right now as to what cut scores will be approved by the state board. What we had done is look at, on the chart that you have in front of you, is to look at the cut scores based on what the commissioner is proposing. And if you look at these by grade level, the percentages for students that would be Level III and above by grade level, now, we're not breaking these down by schools yet or doing anything like that because we, these have not been released and it has not been approved. But we wanted to look to see what the scores would look at, look like, based on the commissioner's percentage and based on her cut scores. Again, the board, state board, has not made that decision. I think it's proposed to be on the 28th or 29th of December that they're going to make a recommendation. As far as reading at the elementary level, in the middle school and high school level, you can see how the numbers break down. Dr. Atkins and I, when I talked to him about this on yesterday afternoon, he asked a question about how this lined up with FCAT prior to the 2.0. And when we looked at, backed through it, the scores with FCAT prior to FCAT 2.0, FCAT originally started out at a 47, and it rose to 62 percent. And then when FCAT 2.0 came on, the scores then dropped, and it went down to 56, and then it jumped up to the 58 percent for the average. As you can see here, the scores are pretty much in line across the board. And then when you go on to the math scores, you see a little bit of a dip in the math scores at the elementary, but not bad. And then you see at the middle grades, and then in the Algebra and the Geometry, a slight dip. Dr. Itzen and I did have a discussion today about the math. I think that is looking at the more strenuous standards, as Dr. Atkins just talked about. It's the change in the standards. We've also, not only did we change the assessment, but we also changed the standards, too. So we have to keep that in mind. And when you're changing two things at one time, it takes time for everyone to understand exactly what you are teaching and also understanding the spiraling of that. So both of, both slides for reading and for math is, again, it's just a prediction based on the commissioner's cut. But again, we have no idea because we don't have the, the release, and we don't know what is going to be approved by the state board.
In, in general, this is consistent with the raising the bar strategy that the state has used in the past. Whenever we've changed assessments or introduced a new assessment, there's been a standard-setting process, and more often than not, at that time, the minimum cut scores are increased, and therefore, the percentage of students that appears, that is deemed proficient, appears to go down, and which beats us all up for a year or two, and then what usually happens is that the districts and schools respond to the new challenge, and they continue to improve, and that's exactly what the strategy is designed for. But unfortunately, we're in that period now and coming up here after the new year of, of getting beaten up by the, the new cut scores, most likely.
And, and just, just a cou, a couple of things with that. One is, just to be clear, again, just like back in 2012, you know, where we talked to the board about less students reaching that same level because of the increase in cut score, that's something that, that we're looking to have to deal with. But the second part about this, because this is a baseline year, we do not have growth. So that is a frustrating piece for us because it is not data that's as actionable as it would be as if we did have growth data to deal with. You see, like Dr. Savage had some ways that we could turn that into growth, and, and we're working on that. But that is why we feel that, that we're working on coming up with our local system for, for determining our grade, or at least how we are doing based on the standards that we are setting. Because, you know, the state with the change year after year, I mean, if you look at their history, how many changes have they made? And we're left to just deal with whatever results they give us. Instead, if we set our own standard and then we can measure that progress over time, I think much more successfully know how well we're doing, which, again, drives instructions and knows if we're being successful or not.
And I guess the key to that, Dr. Atkins, is, you know, as they're trying to figure this out, our kids continue to go through the system. So when we don't, you know, when we change from one system to the next, to the next, and we don't, we really can't tell our parents and our students really where they are because we don't know. It's arbitrary numbers, and they're completely, you know, unconnected. They try to make, you know, correlations, but those correlations are based strictly on formulas and hypotheses that they can't substantiate. So meanwhile, our kids, you know, are in limbo, and I, you know, I take umbrage to that, the fact that I think that it's, it's a very wise idea, Dr. Atkins, to formulate our standards, you know, if they want, if we can correlate our standards to their standards as they continue to figure it out, but I think we can get it much better and much more accurate at a local level and take local control back, so.
So that takes us into the impact on, on school grades potentially. So it is in legislation that the DOE is supposed to release school grades. Many folks around the state, including the Superintendent's Association, has really pleaded with the, the state to not do that because of this transition year, and especially because the learning gains part is not there. And so the, the grades will be based on the proficiency percentages, and we know that's highly correlated with SES status and things like that. So potentially, it'll have a negative impact, and the most negative impact on our lowest-performing schools. That being said, the state and, and in legislation says that there won't be any penalties for that. In other words, there's no school that will go into differentiated accountability status because of the grades that will be released for 14, 15. However, we know that the impact is there once the grades are released and they're public and, and so on. The other part of this that is not totally nailed down, and, and a rule is coming before the state board in January as well, is how the percentages will trans, actually translate into grades. So in the past, it was a system where, okay, there were 800 possible points for elementary school, and if you got 525, you got an A, but it was a different number for middle schools because it was a different total possible points, and so on. And so the, the idea this time is that it's going to be, be based on a percentage of points earned, so that out of whatever number of points my school earned, say, 75 percent of the points. What that 75 percent means in terms of being an A, B, C, D, or F is not determined yet. So that will be an important part of this as well as we, as we see how that unfolds.
What we wanted to show you is just to give you just some information, and you have this in your revised PowerPoint that we put in your packet, but we just wanted you to see the model that's going to be released, that is being proposed by the commissioner, to show the school grades for the elementary, the middle, and the high. I just wanted you to have the information. I know you don't like surprises, so as things come out over the next two to three weeks, we won't see you for a while, but we did want you to have the information. Dr. Atkins felt like that you needed to have it over the holidays and in early January in case information did come out. He did want you to have it in your hands so that you would be aware of it as information is made available.
So the important thing to know about these charts is that the first line where it says achievement, those are the Level III through V percentages, which will be determined by the, the cut scores that will be voted on. And then you see the learning gains components, they will not be included in the 14, 15 grading, but will be included in 15, 16, and beyond. So in this particular case, in elementary school, there will be three measures, and that is the, the percent at Level III through V in ELA, Math, and Science. And in middle school, it's expanded a little bit into Social Studies and a percentage for Acceleration. And then in high school, you add the graduation rate to those components. So, so missing the learning gains part is a, is a big deal, I think, for 14, 15, and, but there doesn't seem to be anything that they can do about at this point.
The Superintendent's Association did ask the commissioner if she would consider actually holding on to these results until 15, 16 data was available, and therefore, you could actually calculate a learning gains component. We don't believe as superintendents that that's going to have any traction, but we felt we would just ask, so.
Do you have any questions?
Board members? Ms. Fisher.
Just have one question. Regarding the retakes, is there a limit, limit to the number of times a student can take, say, the Algebra I retake?
No, not at all. They normally take it, say, in ninth grade or 10th grade, and then it's given three times, actually four times per year. So in their sophomore, junior, and senior year, they can retake that. And then after graduation, if they have not passed, they can continue to take the test.
Boy, that's a lot of money for the test, testing companies.
They're making a lot of money.
Which I guess is the purpose. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes our, our agenda for today. We'll now go open to public comment. Mr. Martin, would you please provide the disclaimer for, for public comment?
School Board Policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda. The subject of, subject of comment is limited to the items on the briefing meeting agenda. The time allotted per speaker is three minutes.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the right side that would like to speak about any topic today? Anybody on the left? I see two. Ms. Quackenbush, start, please.
Afternoon, Board. I'm hearing some fantastic things from you today. I really enjoyed hearing your analysis of our standards as being not as high as they should be. That's absolutely right, and we have charge here. The school board here can set the curriculum. SB 868, 864 says that you have the responsibility and the authority to set the curriculum. There's some outstanding programs out there you should probably be looking at now, and we should have some workshops based on what kinds of curriculums we can offer, such as Hillsdale, that's currently being used in an outstanding charter school in Naples right now, you can go and see for yourselves. Singapore math is something that you can adopt right away, as opposed to the backwards math that we're forced to use with Common Core. There are so many problems with this testing scenario. As long as we are paying and hiring teachers based on the results of their students, they are going to teach to the test. You're going to have to remove the VAM scores in order to prevent that. Kids don't learn from, from testing, they learn from teaching, and we're denying them the time that they are justly supposed to have to be able to be taught. And this is one of the reasons teachers are quitting the profession. Last weekend, I talked to a number of teachers who were quitting because they can't see the light come on in Little Johnny's eyes anymore. Testing them obsessively is not making them happy. They're quitting because they don't have charge of the classroom, and we have to give that back to them. Give them the, the honor that they deserve for the profession that they have chosen. Give them the responsibility that they deserve after all of their training. So thank you so much for considering those items, and we're going to have to figure out how to stop paying them and retaining them based on VAM scores because that is the center of our problem. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Betsy Vaughn. I actually kind of changed gears after listening to some things this afternoon. This past week, I had the opportunity to tour the Early Childhood Learning Services and meet with Ms. Maggie Stevens, and this, this was a very eye-opening experience for me because my background in teaching was high school, and especially- was high school, and especially juniors and seniors. But lately, as I've been thinking about, well, what can we do as a district to improve our graduation rates? I've thought, you know, we need to start with the foundation. We need to start at the bottom. And so I've been doing a lot of reading about Head Start and Early Head Start. And by the time I left after an hour and a half of that tour, I said, I'm not only reborn into this, I'm going to go out and proselytize on the whole thing. And so this kind of tied in to what was said here earlier about the discipline. And I know Ms. Dozier brought up about a center. Well, what I think needs to be done is somehow we need to get, to find more funding for the Early Head Start and for the Head Start programs. Ms. Stevens mentioned a kind of discipline, and I hope I have the term properly remembered, conscious discipline, I think, is what she told me. And I have some references written down at home, and I haven't had a chance to do any reading on it. But one of the things that she mentioned, and it made real sense to me, is that although the district has done a really great job with academic vertical alignment, she doesn't see that alignment for the social and emotional development, that the kind of discipline they use. And I saw it in action where this one little girl was upset, and another one went up to her and kind of was hugging her, and they were so well-behaved. And I think back to my seniors and their phones and anyway. I think really what we need to be looking at is doing a better transition for the kids that were in the pre-K and these early programs, and of course, these are all the economically disadvantaged children, into the kindergartens. Because apparently, and again, I haven't really researched this yet, but it's on my list of things to do, apparently, there's not a good, smooth transition socially, emotionally. And I hear the little buzzer, and so that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. Moving now to Board members and Board Advisory, Board involvement and Board comments. I'll start with you, Ms. LaRiviere.
Okay. Boy, we are running late. So I'm going to go very fast as I can. Had the pleasure of attending the kickoff with Fort Myers High Junior ROTC and James Stevens Academy, where students from the ROTC and from James Stevens were both there at the Burroughs Home. And they are, the JROTC members have been trained to teach our students and work with the students at James Stevens on those character lessons from the uncommon friends that many of our teachers in the classrooms have been using. So along with that, that's older peer-to-younger peer mentoring that will be taking place. Thoroughly enjoyed my time at Buckingham Exceptional Center for their Thanksgiving Dinner, and even enjoyed dancing with some kids in one of the classrooms afterwards. The FSBA, last week, we had the pleasure and to go to the Florida School Board Association Conference. There were two specific sessions that I went to, and I also, I believe, several other members went to one of them. One had to do with sharing out of how Sarasota County has done collaboration with other local agencies in some of their build-outs and with funding. It was very informative, and information's been shared with Dr. Atkins. Along, which totally with it, was the session that I went to on coding, and that's coding specific to writing computer programming. And how I looked at it and I saw the alignment with teaching, the students, their reading and writing connection, and also with math connections. It was, made me see a very powerful place that that could be integrated. And I'm going to be passing out to you, there was a legislative advocacy session that I had the pleasure of participating in, but I'm sharing with you a little bit and also requesting, if it's possible, to plan a legislative workshop. Because one of the things that came out very clear in that training was the fact that we have to be far more proactive. And after talking with Dr. Atkins, after his visit, and knowing our visits last year, sometimes we felt like nobody really wanted to hear what we had to say. And it's about, all was about building relationships, and so we will share that. But what you have right now in front of you is what was shared with Board members who were there on ways to keep in contact with their legislators year-round. Included in that was for each school board member to adopt one or two legislators, that they will be personally responsible for maintaining specific contact with them. You also have birthdays, ways so that we can be active about regarding birthday cards, holiday cards, inviting them to come with us to a performance, being extremely proactive to build those relationships, and also at the same time while we're building relationships, to be very proactive with letting them know our needs, and along with that was building our own tribe, building our own group of legislative advocates who will come alongside us and be really actively involved in supporting the things that are the best things for our students. So it was, it was very, I was very excited. I'm very excited to hear what was going on in Orange County. A lot of good pieces came from there. And that's it.
Great. Thank you, Ms. LaRiviere. Ms. Dozier.
Because of the late hour, I'm just going to take the opportunity to thank everyone from staff here at the central office that picked up an angel off the Salvation Army tree. Because of you, there will be some smiling children during the holidays. Thank you for taking the angel tag, buying the gifts, bringing them back, and I will be going to help deliver them tomorrow. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Fisher.
Okay, I'm going to say thank you for today's briefing presentations. They were all really excellent, and I do appreciate the effort that all of our staff puts into this. We are becoming a healthier school district, and I want to do a shout-out to Collier County, who had their first 5K for a fundraiser and exceeded their fundraising expectations. So many of our staff are paying it forward during this holiday season, and I know they do it every day, but reaching out a helping hand to those who need, who are in need. And at this time, I just want to take an opportunity to wish everyone in the listening audience and here a very happy, healthy, and peaceful holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. And I would apologize to everybody for the late hour. It was, we'll work a little better on the workshops to make it a little bit more timely, but we had three very good improvement plans and some stuff on strategic plan I thought was very critical, and I hated to cut any of that short, so I apologize, I'll take that blame. But I think that all the things we did for the strategic plan and also for the three school performance plans were very critical and very good for the community here as well as the school board. Dr. Atkins?
No comments.
Mr. Martin?
On this afternoon, thank you.
Okay. At this time, our next meeting is, we actually have student performance that should begin shortly, 5:45, and our next school board meeting is at 6 o'clock. With nothing further, I will adjourn this meeting.